Good evening. I will call the June 13th Board of Education meeting to order and I would ask you all to please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you'd all join me with the pledge of allegiance by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we'll have Director Johnson read our mission statement.
Thank you. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to our community.
Thank you very much, India. And now I will go to Exhibit A on our board agenda, which is a board celebration this evening, and Kingsley will be our contact. And it is, the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $100,000 grant from John Deere Waterloo in support of the Teach Waterloo program. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Esther. Go ahead, Kingsley.
This is just about tying up some loose ends. I know that many of the board knows about the Teach Waterloo program. I'm actually going to talk a little bit about it later on, but John Deere, just with the short notice, couldn't be here. But I'm just going to read a quick quote that they, that Lynn sent, so I think everybody knows Mindy from John Deere and the work that she's doing in the community as well. But with, from Lynette, excuse me. Together we have a responsibility to create home, school, and community environments that nurture and protect our children's potential. The Teach Waterloo program will have a direct impact on teachers who can inspire and empower our youth with a level of shared perspective and relatability. It will also have a significant influence on the earning potential of participants. All in all, a win for our students, a win for Waterloo, the Waterloo School District, and a win for our community. I can't tell you on how many calls. We're part of a national network now in regards to Teach Waterloo, Grow Your Own Network. Wasn't able to go to the conference last week just because I'm transitioning out of the position, but that will continue on with Anthony Spaghetis's work as well as the work of the individuals that are part of the program in my office as well. But it's a testament to not what, you know, I've done or anything along those lines, it's what you as a board have allowed, Dr. Lindeman and her leadership have allowed to be able to do, because we are doing it differently than everybody else. I'm frequently on the call saying, how is it possible? How are you able to pay for this? How are you able to get it done? And a lot of that is the dollars that we've spent and the fundraising that we've done. And so, a huge credit to John Deere, a huge credit to Mindy for talking to us about this. There's other people, you know, Dr. Colleen Mahalan, Dr. Robin Data, people that have a vested interest in seeing the diversity of our staff in Waterloo. And again, I'm prepared to show you some outstanding data as soon as I can get this computer working in regards to what has happened in my tenure and what we've been able to do, again with your leadership and Dr. Lindeman's leadership as well. But again, just a testament to John Deere because they saw this as a need. They saw not only the fact that this would impact students, but the really, the huge piece was how it would impact staff and how we were talking about generational poverty and how we're talking about the 24/7 report and how this changes the livelihoods of individuals in our system and individuals in our community that are black and brown. So, that's all that John Deere wanted me to say, but I wanted to make sure that we highlighted the $100,000 and formally accepted it so the district can get its money and we can continue the work.
That's an awesome, awesome donation. And how many do we have? How many kid, people were in the program for this school year, like the '21, '22?
So, we're still, we're still working on that. I got a couple more days left to get that all solidified. We're looking at a cohort of about 12. We're still trying to work on getting some more people in to make sure we can get that full 12. But I'll talk about it later. It's, it's the Teach Waterloo program. It's the branches of the Teach Waterloo program. It's what we're doing as far as reaching out to HBCUs. I mean, it's a concerted effort to make some changes within our staff demographic population, but yeah, it's exciting. And yes, we will, we're working on the cohort to start in the fall.
Perfect. Awesome. Any other questions or comments for Kingsley?
So, is this a transitioning from Teach Waterloo?
This money?
Or from the previous?
Correct. So, the previous money started with the Otto Shortz, nope, started with the McElroy Trust Foundation, and they gave us the $400,000 for that. They also included an additional $100,000 to get the rest of our folks that are currently in the cohort through the program. And then if you remember, there's a $300,000 that Waterloo Schools Foundation has provided as well. So, this is the second phase. And so, we've had two cohorts, thereabout, go through the program. This is to get that third cohort through, or to start the third cohort. Again, excited about the money from Waterloo Schools Foundation coupled with the John Deere funding to move that forward.
So, we haven't yet had anybody that's completed the program and is now a teacher in this?
No. Dawn, Dawn Boone, our Gold Star Teacher, has completed the program. Ben has completed the program. I can't remember his last name. Ben Smith, Benjamin Smith has completed the program. Pamela Palmer has completed the program. So, we have at least three individuals that have graduated, and we'll have individuals graduate in the fall to be hired for the spring.
I guess I'd like to see a kind of a spreadsheet of how many's graduated, how many's, you know, on deck, and how many's just beginning.
That'd be easy to do because that was how we got the money for John Deere. We shared that with him in the presentation, so I can get you that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
How many people will this help? I mean, how does the funding work?
The funding works, it's, it's about 12 people that this funding supports.
That'll take them through all the way through?
Correct. It will take them through two, two years of funding. And again, just to be clear, funding all the efforts. I mean, that's why it's so transformational where you have maybe some organizations that maybe give this or give that, or 50% or whatever percentage that may be, we're funding the entire amount with these dollars. And so, that's what makes it affordable and makes it something that our, our parent educators or support staff can participate in.
This is amazing.
Yeah. And you do know the trick or the surprise, I've tried to say to people, is still somewhat of a logistical nightmare, but I did give credit to our principals because we do continue to pay their salary as they move to student teachers, and that's the gap. That's the gap that other districts haven't done. So, again, kudos to you, again, kudos to Dr. Lindeman for just, you know, believing in that, that drive, that passion to do that work because that's what makes this a successful program. If we didn't have that, the barriers are too much for a lot of our families to support themselves separately with a student teaching piece, and that's what this funds. That's, that's part of what this funds.
Awesome. And as you mentioned, I think as a board, you know, if we can send a thank you note or something to also the John Deere, but the Foundation and McElroy, because again, all these organizations really, really work together to promote our staff, promote the learning of our staff, the bringing up of our staff. So, just if publicly thanking them again for their support and their continual support of the district, so.
And I'd love to have one or all of the teachers who've graduated or in it come, let us celebrate them at a meeting. That would be awesome.
We can make that work, and just so you're, where Dawn is actually going to help the program, you know, giving back, and she's going to be the new coordinator. So, we always were looking back at how we can ensure that alumni are participating in the program and bringing others along and Dawn happily accepted. And so, she will be the next iteration. It moves away from me and my, my craziness and everything else of my departure, and Dawn will do a fantastic job. She's been basically doing the role for the last couple of years anyways.
And Dawn was instrumental as well as others in removing the barriers that existed for that first cohort. We learned a lot. The meetings that we had were enlightening, frustrating, and enlightening at the same time because we would hear, see these big things, and some of them were legislated barriers that have now since been removed because of so many people lobbying UNI and Waterloo Schools, joining force and going to the legislators and saying, we got to have this change because it just gets in the way of us, you know, doing what we know we need to do. So, some of those barriers have now been removed for cohort number three, well, even for two, that's still working, and then cohort three. So, I, I think it's, it's really going to be great, and probably we should have a lot better persistence or retention percentages with each cohort that we do. If we do it right, that's exactly what it should be, because the first cohort was a little bit tough. We, we learned a lot. We learned a lot.
And Jane, you're, you're spot on. You know, the, the article in the paper or the mention of the, the online program was because of Dawn's vocalness about how it should be different, because those meetings with myself, Jane, Dr. Mohorn, as well as far as some of the things, and a huge credit to Dr. Mahalan, the Dean of Education at UNI. You know, many people would have dug their heels, but she was able to, you know, hear us, acknowledge us, and shift the program enough to where we could, we could do some good work. And so, it's an all-around, you know, pat on the back, but definitely for the participants and especially for Dawn.
All right. Thank you very much. So, all in favor of accepting this grant, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. No abstentions, and motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Kingsley. The next thing on our agenda this evening is for information only, and I do also need to add on our agenda, I don't know if you have copies, but for board members, it would be Item O, the Irving Elementary Bus Lane Project. We do need to pull that from the agenda tonight. So, I just wanted to let you all know that Item O will be pulled from the agenda this evening and will be brought back again at the next meeting. Okay? Thank you for bearing with me. And now, we will turn to Dan Huff, the District Athletic and Activities Director, who is going to give us an exciting update on all the Waterloo Schools athletics. So, if you would come to the stage, Mr. Huff, and we appreciate it.
Hey, first off, thank you for allowing me to come in and share some pretty exciting things. I'm going to start out saying it's not going to be all encompassing. I tried to hit some highlights real quickly and I've added some more, but beyond the wins and the losses, there's a lot of really cool stuff going on and a lot of very beneficial stuff to our students and community. The first sheet you have, it talks about some of the state recognition our athletes have received. In the fall, we had our first ever state diving champion, Avery Hogan, who swims with Waterloo United Girls Swimming and Diving. Really want to congratulate her. She's just a junior, so she'll be coming back. I had a privilege of being down in Marshalltown where they hold the state diving and swimming, or the diving meet for sure, and it was really exciting. She, she won it on the very last dive by two tenths of a point. They, they go through about seven dives, and the gal that was the, the leader and the seeded number one, she edged her out in the very last dive, and it was really special. Had some really good football stuff. Once again, we had a really great crowd at the West East football game to kick off the school year, the, the football season. West ended up having a senior defensive back, Tyree Gardner. He was named the Iowa Sports Writers Association Five-A-Thirds Team All-State, which is really good, and it puts him in the West High Hall of Fame up there. Winter sports are, once again, our bowling teams that both Waterloo West and East, boys and girls, all have, have done a great job. You can kind of read there. I think West and East both had the girl state champion. East now has one with three different girls, three state individual bowling state championships. And I think West, they had the first place and the second place in that. They, they changed the bowling tournament around. It was pretty exciting. They, they roll a bunch of games, and they get put in an eight-person bracket, and you got to win each round to become that champ. So, it was pretty exciting, and what's really exciting, it's hosted right here in Waterloo at Cadillac Lanes. Maple and Cadillac Lanes are both great friends and supporters of our bowling programs, and we really enjoy working with them. Waterloo West Basketball, Girls Basketball had another great year. Made it to the state finals. Two girls were first-team All-State. Another one was third team. Couple of them made the all-tournament team. And what was really exciting is those tournaments are held down in Des Moines, and every game, am I doing all right? Am I close enough? All right, sorry. Sorry about that. Every game when West played down there, we had as many as the hometown Des Moines teams to add, and that's, we could have had more. One of the obstacles, and I won't get into it much, but you probably all know, one of the obstacles we're, we're up against is buses. If we could have had 10 or 15 buses, we would have filled them, but we just, they're just struggling like everywhere in the nation trying to find drivers, so we, we're not unique in that. See some pictures there. We had a lot of really good success in track. The, the East High Girls team sent a bunch of people to, I think we had 17 overall events qualify for the state track meet down at Drake. We had about the same number qualify for the Drake, which is all classes. Had some placers down there, and it was a really exciting year for, for our track. One of the things I think I mentioned in the other hand out, were you able to give that out? We hosted eight meets this year at Memorial Stadium, and that's more meets than we've really hosted in, in quite some time. Another thing, kind of going back to the other sheet, that we mentioned last fall, but was part of the, you know, part of last summer, so it didn't get a whole lot of attention, was East High in the Spring and Summer Valley Division of the MVC won the sportsmanship award for soccer, baseball, softball combined. That's, that's a big deal. Those coaches and kids work, you know, oftentimes we hear about the negative, but there's a lot of positive stuff going out with our kids. If you haven't been or seen, both East and West High School host phenomenal golf outings supported by their Booster Club that, that raise a, just a lot of great money, but more than the money raised, the goodwill, the alumni that come back. I know there are people coming back for the reunion, and they want to play in the West or East High golf outing, and it's really full. It's full to the capacity of, there, there's more people that want to play than we can fit. In fact, they often look at, should we have an afternoon, a morning division and an afternoon division, so we, because we hate to turn people away. West Waterloo with Waterloo United Cross Country Team hosted a huge MVC Super Meet, cross-country meet. They host that at Irv Warren. Coach Gordy Youska and Mr. Pappas and Mr. Moses really worked hard. That's a big deal to put on a 32-team cross-country meet, and we did a great job, or those folks did a great job of hosting that. Once again, we, we really love our City Courses, Gates, and Irv Warren. Once again, the Battle of Waterloo is a great showcase, not just for Waterloo Schools, but for Waterloo community. We get supported very nicely by Experienced Waterloo, and we're, and KWWL helps publicize, and we've got a great relation with, with those outfits and Young Arena. It's just truly a great event for Waterloo. This is pretty rare. We had 32 teams that were there. That's how many are always there. This was the 11th year, and all 32 teams, we give them all a chance to sign up for a two-year cycle. They all wanted back in, and we had teams we had to turn away, which we don't like to do, but we, we want to stay loyal to our teams, so we, we had 32 re-sign. We had eight girls teams compete in the duels. This year, we, we're moving to 16 girls with the, with, included with the 32 boys, so that's going to be something special. First time ever, we, we have had a Hall of Fame, but we started recognizing and inducting state championship teams. We recognize the 1983 East High team, the 1989 West High team. This year, we're kind of going backwards. We're going to do 64 from East. They sent five wrestlers to the state tournament in 1964 and had five state champs and won the tournament. West's next state chant was 1977. We were very happy to get our extra murals up and running again. We had to shut them down for a year, and like a lot of our clubs and other activities, once you take a year off, it's kind of almost like starting over again. And it took quite a bit of effort. I want to commend our bus group for providing, we, we provide rides homes for the fifth and sixth graders that take them right to their house, and that takes quite a bit of routing and, and people to do that. Laura Lee Tack does a great job with extra murals. She really spearheads that up. Probably our highlight of our extra mural was the, we hosted the first annual fifth-grade Waterloo Schools Track Meet. Alvin Wright, one of the coordinators at Kittrell, Laura Lee Tack and myself drove down to Dubuque. They've had their fifth, fourth and fifth grade city track meet going on now for about 52 years. So, we went and checked it out. The plate, their place was packed. We took a lot of ideas. We put our track meet on. I didn't really, thought we'd have some runners and we'd be done. I think the home side stands was about three-quarter full. No charge, but we just had a lot of support. The kids had a great time, introduced them to Memorial Stadium and Track. You can see the, the events that we, we did there. We were excited that both the Waterloo United Girls Soccer Team and the West High Boys each won their first round of the playoff. West Boys beat Cedar Falls for the first time in six or seven years. That was kind of a, one of their milestones. Another thing that was our second annual, and when I say "our," it's, it's put on by a group of people at East, West, and Expo, and they held their second annual. First annual is at East High last, this past spring. It was at Memorial. The Extended Core Track Meet was just, it's a phenomenal event. We are getting supported by the Unified Champion Schools of Iowa, which supports the Special Olympics. They, they gave funding to us, and we're working on all of our schools becoming what's called a Unified Champion School for the inclusion of our Extended Core athletes in, in the very thing. East already does a lot with, with bowlers that, that are part of that program, and the track meet was just the second year. The weather was great, and we had KWL out there, but it's those three teachers from East and West, and I know Mr. Peyton and Ms. Hildeman at West and East also, and Mr. Shepherd at Expo also instrumental in that. Talk a little bit about our Waterloo Career Coaches Academy, the WCA. I don't know if you're familiar with this. We just finished our third year of, the Young Family Foundation has supported this effort with $50,000 each year for the last three years and are going to continue that, which we greatly appreciate. We try to do a lot for our coaches, to provide them with quality professional development to help them become better coaches and learn their game. You can look at the folks we had. We had three Saturdays. I don't know if those were handed out to you, but if you look at the, the sheet there, those are some big names in sports that our coaches got to get very close with and have about a two-hour session right here in Waterloo where they, they didn't have to travel, and this is a phenomenal group of accomplished coaches that were able to work with our teams. Excited for the summer going on right now. East High varsity baseball has seven wins or so, so far, way more than they've had in quite a few years. They're playing two full games, which is really good. West softball just recently went on a run, six out of seven, including a walk-off grand slam by an incoming freshman young lady. So, she's just finished her eighth grade year, and she's already hitting grand slams for, for West softball. So, this is, that is some, some highlights that I was able to pull very quickly. We truly appreciate the support of all of you with everything you do and including the support for athletics and extra murals. It's, it really helps us recruit and find people and keep the programs going, and, and we just totally appreciate your support. So, that's really all I had about highlights. If there's any questions or what's on next on tap?
What all, what, what programs do we have right now for middle? It's, I see we're adding some new ones, so what, what do we have right now?
Good question. We have, in the fall, we have volleyball and football and cross-country. And this year, we did a pilot season, and we started about the last week or so of football, volleyball with practice, and then we went in, basically the month of October, we did a pilot seventh, eighth grade soccer. And then when we get to the winter season, we have two winter seasons, a Winter A and a Winter B. Winter A is girls basketball and wrestling, and at Winter B, it's boys basketball. And then we don't have anything for quite a while, and then after spring break, we, we have track for boys and girls.
Thank you. Just got to shout out to my, my daughter. Both of them have done golf, which I've never touched a golf. I was excited that Kelly Nelson wrapped them into it, and she got them in middle school, so maybe we can start bringing in more middle schoolers for golf.
You bet.
And also, were you going to speak a little bit about the new conference for East High?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, really excited about, it was a year of planning, and then we had to finish up a year two of a two-year agreement. You always got to give two years when you're looking at moving, and we are there. Tim and myself have been meeting regularly with, we've called the new conference, the Iowa Alliance Conference, the IAC. There are 11 teams. East High is part of the North Division, which includes former Big Eight schools for the people from way back when, like me. Big Eight West, not, East, Marshalltown, Mason City, Fort Dodge, and Ames. The South Division is the five Des Moines public schools plus Atumwa. You know, if we could get another one on the north side, it'd be even 12 and 12, or six and six on the side. East High is, is working hard to, number one, we need to identify and, and hire a boys and girls cross-country coach. When we moved into that new conference, we really made a pledge to try to have all the sports, so that helps the conference with scheduling and stuff. So, we're really hopeful that we'll be able to get a boys and tennis, a boys and girls cross-country team this fall at East. Swimming, we're going to, we're going to remain that with the way our pools are set up. We think it's a great thing to stay combined. They'll, they'll follow a, an MVC schedule. The, the West High will, the United will be in the West, in the Waterloo, the MVC schedule. Then we're looking at, East is hosting, we're hosting the Boys and Girls Bowling Conference Meet, including all 11 schools here at Cadillac Lanes next, next February. We're also hosting the North Boys and Girls Track Divisional Championship at East High, so we're excited about that. The, the group of ADs has been working on schedules and getting us up and running as a conference. We've got a great guy named Scott Jarvis is our conference commissioner. He has been AD at quite a few places, but he, he just does a super job. He's, he's very involved with Iowa athletics, so we get, we're, we're very fortunate there. We're excited to, to, for East High to, to compete in the Iowa Alliance Conference, and we're very grateful that our school board allowed East High to have that opportunity and, and provide that vote of confidence in that. So, thanks for reminding me about that.
Yeah. That, that's awesome. I'm looking forward to more competitive games and
Absolutely.
and more athletes going out because
That's our hope, is we really feel as, that more success is experienced or more competitiveness, we can attract more, more and more athletes out, so.
Right.
That's kind of why we called it the Iowa Alliance. We're all have the same alliance. We want to, we want to compete with, you know, schools that are of similar size, nature, demographics, et cetera.
And like you said, you know, the conference is actually what it used to be when us old people were in it. We played the Fort Dodge Dodgers. I couldn't remember to go on the bus to play them, and you know, the Roundhouse in Marshalltown.
Oh, yeah.
You know, a lot of really cool. So, we traveled that far then, so now gas is just a little higher.
A little higher. Wow, yeah.
We get four lanes now.
Yeah. Does anybody? Go ahead.
I think this is so important, and appreciate, I want to thank you and all the others involved in, in these sports. You know, as we, as we recognize more and more that experiences are important, sports is kind of the original extracurricular experience, and so we're expanding on that in many ways we can. And, and I know students, people, adults, who remember one person in high school more than any other, and often it's a coach.
I, I would agree 100%. That's a, that's a very
Sometimes fondly.
special assignment, and, and it's a very, you take a lot of responsibility, and, and a lot of times, coaches do what they do and don't realize the, the impact they make on people until many years later when someone stops in and says, remember when you said this to me, Coach? Yeah, yeah, I remember that. Well, Coach probably said that to 100 people, but it meant a lot to the one, so.
But they get, the coaches get to see the students in a very different situation, and students, you know, most behavior And students, you know, most behavior is situational to some degree. And so, you know, there's an opportunity there to see a side of each student that perhaps isn't seen during the regular day. And, you know, good coaches obviously take advantage of that and help develop the character. So appreciate it.
And it provides that carrot for the kids who maybe would have trouble during the rest of the day to make sure that they stay qualified.
That too.
I wanted to thank everybody and Jesse for getting our girls' wrestling going. This is, it's so important and I know so many girls doing it now. So just thank you because I know it was a lot of work for all y'all.
We have some folks who would speak on that. Is that a separate item or is that part of this? Okay. Is the seventh and eighth grade soccer separate?
That's separate item. You're coming up later too. So this was just information at this time, but yeah.
I have a question about, when you mentioned about the Waterloo Coaches Academy and the funding, will that funding be sustained?
So far, it was a three-year commitment and we've been given the green light to keep going indefinitely.
Okay.
Well.
For the near term.
Yes. Good question.
Yeah. And I think you talked of all this. I didn't even hear you mention Battle of Waterloo. So there's another thing you did. Yeah? Oh, he did? Okay, sorry, I missed it.
That's okay. I do have, one of the things we, one of our goals in the Waterloo Coaches Academy was to really honor and recognize our coaches, especially our coaches that got some longevity. We came up with a little pin. We have a five-year, 10-year, 15-year, 20-year, 25, 30, 35, 40, 45 even. So I have a couple of these pins if it's appropriate. I would, if you would raise your hand, do we have board members who have five years in?
Lyle's almost at 45.
No. For coaching, right?
No, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Is it okay if I give them a pin?
Of course it is, yeah.
No, I don't.
I did eight years coaching. Can I get two pins?
Two more years and you can get a 10.
Yeah, keep going.
That's a great idea, Dan.
10 or 5?
5. Thank you.
Did you say 10?
No, 5.
Indy, you got 5 in?
For what?
Coaching.
No, no. Board member.
Oh, a board member.
Yeah, board member.
It just has
Indy, Indy has 5.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have 12, so I get double.
You get a 5 and a 10.
Loud gets 8.
He gets 10.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want to see what your, I got 5. I do have 5. I want to see what your math is like for Loud though.
That's cool.
Thank you, sir.
Loud gets a 12.
Give him 3 10s. He's close.
You got 10?
Yeah.
Still going?
Keep going.
15?
Keep going.
Keep going.
You're going to need change back.
25?
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it.
We'll hang on to the 30 for
Right.
Folks, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
These are small token, but I think, you know, I'm almost a 5, so I want to get the 5.
That's right.
Well, you know we like gifts. So it's about time for new quarter zips too. Just to put that in there.
For sure.
Okay. Is that all on the excellent, excellent athletics across the district? So the next thing on the agenda would be item C, and it's a cooperative sponsorship agreement. And again, it's Dan Huff as will give us the information, but it's just an annual renewal. Is that basically for the sports that different schools ask to join? They don't have it at their school and they ask to join and they are assigned to a Waterloo program.
Basically, they all have this exhibit right here, right? Most of these are renewals. Some of them are where East had been sharing with West and we're trying to make those stand alone, that you'll see those are going away. Most of them are all smaller schools around us who do not have some of the sports athletic teams that we do. Probably one of the biggest considerations when any team in Iowa was looking to bring on a team to share, number one, does it put them, does it change them out of their conference? Do, you know, if you're a 1A school and you bring in another person to, another school to share something with, if it puts you into that upper, another level of Class 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, 5A, they may be less inclined to do so. But we're already at the largest size for most of our sports, except three on the girl's side. Those are East volleyball, softball and basketball are 4A out of a 5A deal. The rest, all the other sports are in the largest class. East High football is too, a 4A football school out of 5A. I don't know, I would certainly, I guess the new law several years back was, this is just information, but you can see the information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Has the number of students increased or stayed about the same or decreased?
We looked into that and I don't, I didn't go back that far, but we had about 50 people contribute to, in a sharing, but you know, 21 of those were West and East in a swim share. So it's just a smattering. It's just kind of an opportunity. Bowling, there's probably some pretty good bowlers that are from Hudson. Obviously our diving person was for Waterloo United was Columbus. But you know, I've been to those swim meets. They're one team. You wouldn't know that it's not Waterloo United. You wouldn't know that it was five or four or five schools combined together. They just really get along great and it's kind of fun to see, I think, for, and it's a good, good, good marketing for Waterloo schools because a lot of these kids come and probably have an impression and then they get here like, this is pretty fun. This is pretty cool. Good, good people.
Well, I think, any other questions about the sponsorship sharing? Okay. Thank you very much. I guess we're done for now. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. This is an opportunity where those who wish to address the school board may do so. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer, Board Secretary, will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive. We're all here with the goal of trying to help our students. Please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through the proper channel and not in this public forum. Finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comments, but it is generally not a back and forth discussion, especially of items that are not on our agenda. At times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. With this said, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward and start by stating your name and your home address.
How y'all doing?
Good.
My name is Rocham Berry and I live at 1545 Audubon Drive. All right, and before y'all start timing me, I want to say, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity. Thank you for all you do. I want to thank all our community members that's here, invested in our community here to support our district, okay? And so, and another thing, I want to say something loud. I like what you said about how the student athletes connect with the coach and things like that and their behaviors and things like that. Because I'm going to be talking about social, emotional learning of our students and our staff. And so I want you to be reflective because that's what we do as educators. We always reflect and think about things. So I want you to be reflective of some of the things I'm discussing with you all and our student needs, okay? And this is race for me because I have more and I'm trying to condense it in three minutes. All right, so the first, I got three big rocks. Social, emotional well-being of our students, social and emotional well-being of our staff and equity and the lack of opportunities for Black and Brown staff members, okay? So I know that we had the COVID situation. We know that learning was lost. But our students' social, emotional needs were, they had a lot of deficits prior to that. You know, as you can think about when we grew up, we grew up, it was, it looked way different. And these needs are higher because they're going up in a different time, technology and all those things. Our students are hurting due to not having those needs met. And if you don't know a lot about that, that's the social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills and responsible decision-making, skills that we all need in our, in our adult life and skills that some areas we're strong in, some areas we need to continue to work on. And so it's not just kids, it's adults too, all right? So these deficits are impacting our, our kids tremendously. Their mental wealth, their mental health. I have kids coming in all day, high anxiety, depression, self-injuring, suicidal ideations, thoughts of deadly attacks on schools and we know what happened and we seeing the violence within our community. And, and so we do have a curriculum, which is second step. I love the curriculum. It's often, but that's, it's awful, awesome, excuse me, but that's not enough for our students. We need to implement a school-wide district framework. And if we do it and we, if we do it effectively, our kids will be, they're going to thrive academically with their attendance and with their behavior. Because our kids need opportunities to connect. They need to have a voice in the classroom. They need to feel valued. They need to be respected and feel respected. They need to have more opportunities to celebrate diversity. They need to build empathy within themselves and compassion for their peers. They need to strengthen their emotional resilience, be able to feel comfortable expressing and being who they are without judgment. And our students, our babies are struggling with that and it's hurting them tremendously. But not only our babies, our staff too, our adults, our teachers who got in this field with the passion and the love for kids and for learning. And our students, our teachers are hurting. They're stressed. I see it every day. I've seen teachers walk, they leave our building, they sit in the classroom after work crying because they want kids to feel successful. They want kids to be successful, but they're stressed. They're depressed. They don't feel valued. They don't feel supported. We have teachers leaving, great teachers leaving our district who wants to be here, but they aren't giving, they don't have the opportunity to care for themselves. And we have to give our teachers that opportunity. Because when we have good teachers and we have healthy teachers and we have happy teachers, that transfer to our students' academics. That transfers to our students' behavior.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You're at your three minutes.
Three minutes?
I'm sorry. So if you just want to wrap up at the statement or something, we really appreciate.
I am going to wrap up. I'm going to just touch base.
Do you have much more?
Not too much more. Just one more. I just want to hit, I just want to hit this equity part, okay? And I'll be quick with that, all right? I just, we just need to be committed to giving our Black and Brown teachers opportunities in leadership roles. We have to really review our, our practices and things like that and look at our qualified Black and Brown teachers who have the same qualifications of teachers from smaller rural areas, but not getting opportunities or even more qualifications and being passed over for those things. And we need to, we need to hire more teachers of color that are from this community because they know our kids, they know our families, they can connect with our kids and they can connect with our families. Our, our people love Waterloo. We all love Waterloo, all right? And we want our school to be successful. We have our strategic plan and it talks about a lot of these, all these things that I'm talking about right now. But if we need you and we need y'all, we need y'all ear, we need y'all to hear us because we are hurting, our kids are hurting, gun violence in our community is high. And what matters to me, it's okay if our kid, if my daughter have straight A's, I'm okay with that. But when she goes to her job, they don't care about that. Because I went to a UNI STEM conference for three years in a row and it was healthcare providers, it was engineers, manufacturing, manufacturing and finance. And all of them said, we can teach those things, the things that they learn in the school and help them grow and develop, but we can't teach communication. We can't teach collaboration. We can't teach kids how to, our kids how to work well with others and how to take risks. And if they don't have these social, emotional skills and if we're not giving them that, it's going to impact their whole lives. Because I want my neighbor, I don't care what my neighbor got in high school, I want him to be trustworthy. I want them to have compassion, empathy and happiness. And that's why I won't live next door to me.
Oh, thank you very much. We just
Mr. Berry.
Mr. Berry.
If you
Where are you located?
Huh?
Where are you located?
Hoover.
Hoover. Thank you.
I also want to let you know, if you have those comments written down, you can certainly send them to me and I will forward it to the board.
I will. Thank you so much.
And thank you so much for your passion. We just have to be, talking about equity, we allow three minutes, so thank you. Okay, are there any other? Okay, perfect. Please state your name and your address and then we'll begin your time. Thank you.
Latonya Graves, 607 East Donald Street, Waterloo, Iowa. So my concern is about boundaries. And I would like to know, how long have the current boundaries been in place? And I believe when I was in elementary school, I remember couldn't wait until I got to East High. And so by the time I got to middle school, everything was great. And then when I got to high school, the boundaries changed. And I lived in this house. There was a house in the middle and then a house on the right. And so because I was in this house, I was in East High's district. The house in the middle, I guess they got to pick and choose. The house on the right, they were West High's district. And so my concern is those boundaries have been in place for maybe 40-plus years? How often are they looked at? And do you believe that it's time to relook at them and change some of them? Because the community is so diverse now. And I see kids standing in front of my house at 6:30 in the morning and I live on East Donald. Carver is a couple blocks away and they're being bussed, but they're out there so early in the morning. And so I'm up at 6 o'clock, so I watch. But it's time to relook at these boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? Well, we thank you both for doing that and we will get back with you and you and we just appreciate both of your passions for the district and, and trying to make us the best place, the district the best place ever. So thank you both. The next action item on our agenda will be the consent agenda, which tonight, that consists of eight items. The item D is the minutes of the May 23 regular board meeting. Item E, the personnel appointments and adjustments. Item F, the bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item G, the IJAG Memorandum of Understanding, Middle School. Item H, the Iowa Association of School Boards 2223 membership dues. Item I, the Iowa Schools Finance Information Services, ISFIS, 2022 subscription fee. And item J, the Urban Education Network, UEN, 2223 membership dues. Are there, can I get this on the, any item that the board members would like to have removed?
E is an eagle.
E is an eagle, okay.
I is an Indian.
I is an India?
Different.
The country.
But not this
The country India. Yeah, not this India. Okay? Anything else? Okay, so can I get into motion to accept items D, F, G, H, J?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 7-0. Next, we will go to item E, which is the personnel adjustments. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So moved. Sorry.
All right, and a second?
Second.
And discussion, please.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to address some of the personnel and as far as some of the discrepancy as far as salary. And Kingsley, you know, we kind of talked, but could you just kind of go over some differences as far as salaries that's on here?
Yeah, so, so in general, when you see differences in salary and you'll see multiple see multiple names on here sometimes, you see some level of salary adjustment that occurs around this time period, because this is when we do admin and admin support contracts. I wanna apologize to my admin, admin support folks, because those contracts did take a little bit longer to get out just because of transition. Uh, however, um, there's multiple processes. I think what, you know, you've seen from, uh, from me and Dr. Lindeman has been around looking at those ranges. How do we, um, compare, not only with UENS, but I think, you know, Lyle has always talked about how we compare within the community itself, um, not only just to school district positions, but like positions maybe in other industries. Um, you know, there at times are, um, different processes that are used in regards to hiring individuals, um, for positions. And sometimes when those processes are used, um, they could, um, interrupt, for lack of a better word, disrupt, some of that, um, that balancing act that we try to do on a regular basis. Um, but it's something that again, um, as I'm talking to Anthony, oh, excuse me, talking to, um, Mr. Spaghetti or I'm talking to, um, um, Dr. Smith as well, it's something that we can continue to talk about as far as how we're balancing those over time, um, to make sure that we don't have people that are, um, too high moving forward or too low. And so if you remember some of those conversations from the finance committee's standpoint, uh, we shifted elementary principals about three years ago because they were low as we looked at UENS, but also as we looked at just like positions within the Hudson, within Cedar Falls and some other areas. So it's not necessarily outside of practice for us to do, um, that on a regular basis, especially if, um, individuals come on, um, a little bit higher. But that does speak to different processes potentially. You know, if you use, um, an outside agency compared to using the district, um, that does happen. But there's some mechanisms that we can continue to talk about in the future that can help adjust and set that forward.
I know that we kinda have a, a baseline when it comes to our teachers and teacher salary and we kinda have some idea. So this was kinda new as far as like the salary rates of those who are coming in at a higher level. And so, you know, in my mind, I was thinking of a tier, a salary range. Um, so when you put out a job description, does it say negotiable? Because in my mind, if you have a salary rate of, let's say, one-fifty to one-sixty-one and are applying for a position, that's what I'm gonna go for without the idea of being negotiable. Um, with that said, you know, a lot of our teachers who are applying for higher positions and/or, you know, district-level positions, do they get to negotiate in the middle of that also? And so, you know, if that's not the common practice and if we're moving forward, I know we're getting a new superintendent, a new human resource person. I think as a board, we should be aware of what that maybe looks like so we can be confident in explaining why something may be. Um, so that was, you know, just me trying to decipher what the discrepancies as far as salaries in this new pool of, um, candidates that we have.
Absolutely. We can, we can definitely prepare something for the weekly update just to talk about those, uh, bans and, um, those salary bans and what we do from that perspective. So you have that information as we move forward. And again, this is, this is such a tough, difficult time, right? When we, we're dealing with, um, some, uh, some tough transitions with Dr. Lindeman, um, leaving. And so, uh, and I know I'm leaving as well, I was just letting that slide. Um, but with that, that just comes some, you know, just making sure that we're all on the same page and wanting to make sure that, um, not only you have that information, but Dr. Smith as well as Anthony or Mr. Spaghetti has that information as well. So it's just an educational opportunity all around.
Maybe, maybe a workshop might be an idea too.
Well, I don't wanna have another meeting, but I could definitely send another, um, no, I'm just joking.
Not just a touch and all review, not necessarily detailed.
No, I'm just joking. Whatever, whatever the board would decide, but we can definitely, you know, send some additional information just to you via the weekly update and then you can ask questions from there.
And I will say that in that, you know, because we're getting a new person, new human resource person, what his vision is, um, because you know, you know, it, it could be different. His experience will be different, you know, moving forward with, uh, Dr. Smith and, um, Anthony, just knowing what their vision, because it could be totally different under the new reign that we have. Um, but it's just beaten in the know, transparency.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wanna, you know, just throw out a hu- huge caveat or quick caveat, you know, just giving them some time, just because we've hired most of our positions for the, for the year. I mean, we have some stragglers that we're still working through, we're still working special ed, we're still working through some secondary staffing positions. But my hope is, uh, we're done with our kinda major positions as that pertains before I leave. That's what we're trying to wrap up. Um, but yeah, we can definitely give you kind of a framework of what we have done. Um, and it's similar to when Dr. Smith, you know, transitioned, uh, Dr. Beverly Smith transitioned, she had a framework as far as what she had done. And it was honoring her legacy, but also thinking, okay, how can I do something different? How can we, um, talk about things differently from that perspective? So I can provide that process to the board.
And, and I think related is, uh, you know, our, our past practice, at least during Jane's tenure, is to kinda discourage across the board raises for administrative staff, which allows some flexibility in moving a little bit more with the market and with the demand. And so, I mean, that's another question, whether we wanna continue with that or not. I think it's been, been helpful. And, you know, you're looking at these numbers and every year evaluate them and say, well, this, you know, so it provides some flexibility for the superintendent, I think. I think that's been beneficial.
I definitely agree to that. And I, I will also add that, you know, I just wanna make sure that we are honing in on those who have been in our district and making sure we support them for their salary. And I'm not saying new blood is not great, but I don't wanna ever lose individuals because of, you know, salaries are not what they thought they were. So just wanna, you know, pick that. That's some very important to me too, so.
And I have a question regarding the staffing for fall. Uh, are we gonna have any teachers?
We are, we are. You know, so, um, you know, Rashawn in the audience, he was absolutely right. And I think I've spoken to that, um, a number of times at the board table. I mean, a lot of kudos has to go to our staff. I mean, um, we're the talking pieces at the mic at times, or at least I'm the talking piece at the mic sometimes, but our staff are the ones that show up and show out every single time and opportunity. Um, what I will say about Waterloo that is different, because I think you have seen Des Moines, some other places that have had some terrible, terrible resignations and, um, just a proliferation of individuals, um, participating in the Great Resignation or going to look for opportunities. Um, what I've learned about Waterloo in my tenure is that people care about our kids. I'm not saying the other teachers don't. So please don't, you know, leave here. I don't think Andrew's here at all, but don't leave here and say that, you know, Des Moines public school teachers don't care about their kids. What I'm saying that there's something special about Waterloo that the same concerns that we're seeing across the state and across the nation are not happening here. Um, we have some special ed issues, to answer your question. We have some special ed, um, teacher issues. We have some secondary math teacher issues. Currently, there's about forty-six, um, secondary math teacher openings in the state right now. So it is tough to find our core secondary positions. Um, yeah, Janie, we, we may have to bring you back.
That is my major.
We may have to bring you back. But by and large, not only from the list that you see here, um, but some of the data that we did with, um, Dr. Hooper and, uh, you and I, transform, Center for Transformational, um, Center for Transformational-
Education.
Education, there we go. Um, highlighted how resilient our staff have been and how they have stuck and stayed. So, I mean, Anthony and I just met not too long ago, Mr. Spaghetti and I just met not too long ago, and he was asking me, what do I have to be concerned about? What are some of the concerns? And I was like, Anthony, we're really in a good place right now. Um, that's not necessarily just speaking to that resiliency in our teachers and wanting to stick and stay in Waterloo, but it also speaks to the board's capacity and understanding of those desires. When we bring to you proposals, um, from our union about negotiating those larger salary increases, those matter as well. So right now, we're feeling pretty good. That's what I'm hoping to pass the torch in a way that, um, you know, Mr. Spaghetti has a way to ease into the position. And I would say special ed and, um, secondary, um, core positions, more math and science are struggles right now. And we're still trying to make sure we clean those up before I leave.
Just to piggyback off what, um, Kingsley and India said, um, we all know Waterloo has a pretty unique place. And we talk about, um, you know, June is, is, is unique in, in the amount of hires that we have and the, the turnover that we have. Um, and I, I believe we've been spoiled, uh, over the past, oh, probably century, way before I got on the board with, um, district leadership team and, and, and people in, in, in position and the visibility of the leaders in our district. Um, so with, with this new transition, I wanna be on record, um, to be clear that, you know, Waterloo is unique. We're, we're community-oriented. We're, um, family, if you wanna say. Whether you east side, west side, um, we're considered family. So, um, just the visibility in, 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 in positions and, and getting out, as Mr. Berry stated, um, being able to see your neighbor, being able to go to the grocery store and see a teacher. Um, I think that's important. Um, going forward, uh, you know, we, we, we've been spoiled. So hopefully that can continue. Um, I'm, I'm sure it will. Uh, but just, uh, you know, just wanted to put that out there and, and, and thank those that, that were in position, in those positions and, and look forward to, uh, the, the new tenure coming in. Uh, so just excited about the, the new opportunities. Yeah, it's, you know, and we're in such a strange time with, you know, inflation and, and we're at on salaries and everything rising. I mean, there are challenges ahead and we're gonna have, make something, maybe take some creative solutions to really get staff in where we want it and make sure we got the bodies we need it and, and flexibility too. I think it's gonna take both. So, I mean, it's, I, I don't, you know, I, I think about back where I was twenty years ago starting, it's like how things have changed that much in twenty years. And but it's, you really look back in the last five years, wow. It's, it's, uh, salary changes, you know, market demand, employee availability, stuff that was really kind of a, not a stressor. It's now, I imagine keeping a lot of HR people very, uh, wake late at night, so.
No, thank you. It's been awesome. And again, please, please, for those in the audience, but also, um, save your questions. There's some really cool data, um, with the equity plan and the, um, AAOC report that I think is gonna speak to maybe even some of the questions that we have today.
And we really thank you for all your work, Kingsley. So, I mean, um, kinda forgot it was your last meeting tonight too, so.
We're working on scheduling another one yet this month.
Good, good. So, um, yeah. But, and again, I would, I would say that I think that we wanna get the best people in the jobs and the best time and the best place. And sometimes that takes a little bit of negotiating and maneuverability. And so sometimes it, it may not at that current time seem exactly equitable to something that was previous, but I think we wanna get the best people on the bus at the right time. And so, um, that's, and I'm excited about that. And one thing I'm very proud of, and I think Kingsley, you can, and Dr. Lindeman hang your hat on, our starting salary, because I see a couple of these graduates, forty-seven, two-fifty for a teacher. Woo-hoo! I mean, my daughter started at thirty-eight thousand for teaching in Des Moines. So that, it's awesome. It is awesome. And cost of living's a lot higher in Des Moines.
Which is, which is criminal. Thirty-eight thousand for a beginning teacher is criminal. That, that job is so hard.
Mm-hmm. I agree one hundred percent.
So, um, can I, okay. So Kingsley, I just had a question and this too hits on Mr. Berry. Um, the West High, is, there's gonna be a counselor opening and pointer, there's a counselor opening. Are those both posted and being, um, filled? I mean, are those open and we're doing interviews for?
So, um, yeah, West, West is open. I believe Pointer we just worked on and finished and closed.
Okay.
Um, but West, again, I may speak more about that. I mean, we, what, what I'm gonna talk to you about in the next, um, session, but I can talk about a little bit here, is that I think what we've tried to do is really, um, prioritize diversity. And my hope is that the board will take that conversation that Dr. Lindeman and I are gonna have here briefly, um, to heart, because diversity is a strategy. It matters to make sure that we have a diverse, um, network of individuals, not only in diversity of thought, but I'm talking about background, skin color, um, religion, whatever the case may be. And so, um, there's some things that, yes, that West position is open. We're hoping to find somebody. But the reason why it's op- open late was because we were trying to do some, um, finagling for a diversity hire, um, that we were really excited about or I'm, we're still really excited about.
Right.
Um, and so we're still trying to hire those positions. And, you know, for the board's, um, perspective as well, this won't be on the one that I'll speak to, but, um, Mr. Spaghetti may speak to it next time. We also, um, based on some feedback from Dr. Smith, uh, and working through Dr. Lindeman, we've also hired family support workers at the, um, middle school level as well. And so unfortunately, the, you know, I always tell people, the, um, the work here always turns like a ship. It's never, um, quick, but I think we are making some strides there that I think can be really good.
Good. I just, especially the, the high school counselor position, I, I'm hoping that we're not going to try to go a year without filling that. That's four hundred some kids that, yeah.
We were, we were looking at, not to focus too much on, um, the position itself, but overall, we're looking at different strategies. Um, and this is a conversation I've actually had with, um, Latonya a couple of times, with different strategies because of the certification that counselors have to have.
Right.
Um, if we're looking at career counselors or even getting people from the community in our buildings, can we look at different things that, um, could do that, especially around counseling, especially around, um, that family support piece? And so those are still things that we're still working on. But that was a part of what we were trying to do at West, was trying to figure out, was there gonna be a career counseling opportunity here or not? Now, ultimately, we're gonna try to backfill the position so that conversation's not gone. Um, but we were trying to figure out, is there something really exciting that we could do? So the position was always gonna be backfilled. It was just about timing and how we're gonna figure out with all those other pieces.
Okay, thanks.
And I can assure you, just because I work with the counselors so heavily, we are trying to do something really potentially unique. So cross your fingers that it all works out, but we're, we're definitely working on that.
Good, thank, I just, and I, and I love the idea. I just don't want four hundred kids to go a year without-
Yep. And we have a plan for that too, but we have definitely spent-
Thank you.
Spent some time on that.
And I just, I'm sorry, I had one other question. Someone asked me that, like, when you're applying for a position within the district, so let's say, and what I would call it is overqualified. Let's say if you have a PhD and you're signing up, you're applying for an entry-level teacher position. Does that PhD or that master's automatically put you in a higher category? I mean, in a teacher, it would, but in like a other role, so you're maybe overqualified for the position?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question and that's probably gonna be a lot of time. So I'll just try to answer it as brief as possible. I think one of the things that we've looked on, looked at from a basic HR standpoint is we look at experience. Now, we try to change job descriptions at times. There's a job posting right now that we try to say, maybe it's not the degree, but you have some level of experience, um, within the role that we can, um, we can try to figure out how we can finagle to support you in that role. The other piece of it beyond experience is really looking at, um, the job duties themselves. And so I think, you know, what I think people do sometimes is say, you know, hey, I have these degrees, I have these qualifications, but they don't fit the particular category themselves. Then it becomes an issue as far as, well, we don't need a PhD for a transportation manager. We just hired this for the transportation manager. Is there another seat that we can find you at the table? Now, again, because of, we have some proliferation of monies and some other things that could help us have some conversations. But again, and Michael and I have this conversation, it's such a, it's such a puzzle. It's not as, I think people are like, okay, this position here, we'll figure this out, you know, figure it out for this person and move on. You gotta look back at ten years almost of data. You gotta look at across the board how it looks. It's, it's literally, I think it's fun, obviously, because I'm a HR, but I think it's, it's a intricate puzzle piece of how you're trying to figure out, how are you empowering or thinking about experience? How are you not? Um, how are you making sure that you're paying attention to those job responsibilities and the qualifications for the role? But also, as was mentioned tonight, how are you honoring, um, that community experience as well? And it's, it's a tough, it's a tough conversation because if we do something here that is different than some other places, or if we do something for someone that's different for somebody else, you know, and then you run the route of discrimination issues and lawsuits that I really tried to keep the district out of. So it's, it's, you know, half of one thing and, you know, two dozen of another that we're trying to figure out. But these are good questions that, again, as, as Anthony comes in, um, you know, as far as how those things are communicated out and still being an advocate for Waterloo, I think this will give me an opportunity to talk more eloquently about that to the community, about how these processes occur.
Okay. I guess my experience is that, there's kinda two separate issues. One is, I mean, in the organization, everybody has a role, all right? And that's a defined role and it has certain value. Now it varies, it can vary within, you know, with the position somewhat. But in terms of if someone comes up overqualified, to me, that may put them in a lane for a different role that may be of more value. But it doesn't automatically mean that person is more valuable, is extraordinary valuable in the, in the role or position. So I look at it as, everyone has a role and that role may change. That's how you advance, but.
All right, thank you. All right, all in favor of approving the personnel, um, appointments and adjustments? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So the motion carries six, zero with one abstention. Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be item I, and this is the ISFIS subscription fee. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the payment of three thousand, four hundred- And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the payment of three thousand, four hundred, ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents for the twenty-two, twenty-three subscription fee to the Iowa School Finance Information Services.
Subway.
Second.
And discussion.
Uh, yeah, I was kind of challenged on this and wasn't sure I had the correct answer. So maybe Michael can, can help here. I think one of the benefits in the past was the, was the finance, the source and the sink of some funds for cash flow purposes, if I remember right, but I'm not sure if we're still doing that. So, yeah. Last item, information on ways to save money and become more effective. So basically, my question is, and it's not a lot of money in the total scheme of things, but what, what's the main benefit that we get from this?
Well, I think there's several people that can address this, because they don't just talk about money. It is money as it involves what Kingsley was talking about. How do you do an HR scan of what's going on? Uh, one thing that they have just instigated, maybe in the last two years or maybe three, the U E N job-alike groups. So like in my case, all the CFOs get together two or three times a year. I know HR does that. Superintendents, I think, are in contact probably much more than that.
And that's actually coming through U E N services, though. That's from the membership. But ISFIS actually some contracts for part of that to support. So it's super confusing because they mesh, but yes.
Yeah, so, but it, it really is that mesh that makes it work. Because you've got different perspectives and you can come to the table whether you are, have a, have a differing opinion or one that just flows with everybody else. I was talking to An- Anthony about that today, just from that advantage of saying, schools are a safety net as far as business, because when we communicate with each other, we're not competing. If somebody comes to, uh, you know, I, I, I bet there's twenty to thirty emails a day from the CFOs that are going back and forth and back and forth figuring this out, and they're all working together. It's not an issue of, well, we can't tell them all of our secrets, or then they're going to be, you know. So it's, that's really an advantage of this. And, and that's a place that ISFIS plays in this, that they, they know the legislation, they know what laws are being addressed, who to talk to, what points that may clarify where this law is going. And that's just as the laws begin. And then to, to flesh them out into practice, it can be a different application for Waterloo to Union or Hudson, or, you know, they're the same, but they can be different. So from, from my standpoint, from the money side, yes, how, how do we understand and implement the new practices that come down from legislation, for instance? And it really does help to have a group of, a group of heads and experience trying to work your way through that. So we're doing something that eventually gets down to that ground level of how does that practice really benefit the district? You know, there's probably four or five groups that I deal with just in the, on the finance side. And sometimes you have to hear it from about three different places before it either makes sense or it's filled out enough that you can identify where you're going with it. So from my particular standpoint, you know, there's some double up services, but I'd rather have it confirmed from two or three places than just to take one. And you're still kind of confused about what's the best way to do it. But I think it's worked out really well.
So I'm thinking, I'm hearing it's a good data source for comparative purposes. It's a good venue to deal with changes in government policies, particularly financial policies. And it's also reassuring new innovative programs.
Yeah, and they're, they're also innovative in different practice. I know they've got a negotiation model that they support. They've got a five-year projection model that they support. They've got, had another one in mind, as I said it, I forgot the third one, but the background checks. So when they see a need for a district, it's kind of saying, well, not everybody can afford to do it on their own. So they'll come ahead, come in with a consortium view and promote that. One of the things that we've talked about just in the last couple of years, because of where we're sitting in the current national scene of having some certainty to natural gas costs. Of course, you pay a higher premium for the risk or covering your risk, but it does do that. So it, it gives you an opportunity to kind of consider a different point of view than just being on your own.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Michael?
How much do we use it for advocacy support? I see it listed as a.
So I, can I tackle the advocacy support? Because I was just, I'll start it and then you can finish it. But here's, here's the difference that has changed over the last year. So when Lou Finch from the U E N, who was the executive director at that time, when he retired, we did not have a good leader to emerge from that. So we actually voted as a U E N steering committee, which some of you have been on the steering committee, actually voted to go to ISFIS and ask for them to pick up the leadership portion of U E N. So ISFIS has a kind of a smorgasbord of services that they provide. And one of them is leadership support, direction support, vision support, legislative support. And so they actually now have the contract for the executive directorship of the U E N, even though U E N is self-led. That's very confusing, because we have a U E N policy and we have an ISFIS policy, because they're very meshed. But I have to tell you, I was just at a superintendent meeting on Friday, and the thing that came up was that we actually get the best of both worlds, because one hand is now speaking to the other, because they are so intertwined. So U E N is the advocacy piece, but we have all of the ISFIS and the leadership of ISFIS. So all of our numbers and the cost of legislation, the proposed cost of things, when a bill is proposed, ISFIS runs the numbers, and then the U E N takes that lobbying piece and they, we get direction. So it really goes back and forth. So as far as your question about how much advocacy do we get, we get all of the background information and facts out of ISFIS. And then U E N helps us create the documents that go forward for the U E N lobbying. Clear as mud?
Yeah, no.
Okay. They're really intertwined, and this is the first year, and we just took it to vote for the steering committee, which is a rotating thing, you know, all of the districts on there have a rotation. And it was a unanimous thing to continue with it, because I think all of us saw it as a huge benefit to have the right hand and the left hand really talking together.
Some good collaboration going on.
Yeah, so you could almost think of the U E N subscription or membership fee and the I, and the ISFIS as one, because you real, they are speaking together better than they've ever had. I, I feel hugely supported on that. So I definitely would advocate for it.
Now you say we got to have one, we have to have the other now, basically.
Well, I kind of think so. That's, that would be my suggestion going forward, but the U E N has been, we've been very helped by the ISFIS partnership.
Okay, everybody good with that? All right. All in favor of approving the ISFIS contract, subscription, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven, zero. The next action item on our agenda is item K, and that is the middle school athletics, soccer, and swimming. And Mr. Huff will come up and share his wisdom on that. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the formation of a middle school soccer program and swim program as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you.
Just possible, permissible, Coach Mike Penning, West High Boys Soccer. He, he was very instrumental in, in our pilot season. And just have him, if you have, when we have questions or anything, I'd like to have his perspective as one of our high school coaches that is really behind and supporting getting the middle school soccer program up and going. So I'm going to let Mr. Coach Penning. By the way, MVC Valley Division Coach of the Year, Mike Penning, here to talk a little bit about how he.
Thanks, that's quite the introduction. I found out about this about two hours ago too, so just bear with me here. But it, it is a real neat thing, and I kind of went to Mr. Huff a couple of years ago, when I had a lot of time during COVID, to think about this. And it's, it's something that the Iowa City Schools, Hiraupi Schools have been doing for years. And we were able to kind of piecemeal something together last fall, and it worked out really, really well. It did not take long to see that we were serving a population during these practices and games that, that we just don't touch anywhere else. There's a lot of diverse students, marshallees, students that aren't going to go out for another sports, aren't doing clubs after school, you know, typically, we wouldn't touch at all. And just, if we have a month-long practices, four games, and we had, it was kind of neat. We had every single student athlete at these games. We had Memorial kind of jamboree setting where we had every person play in that game. So you could watch, you're, you know, the girls would watch the boys, and the boys would watch the girls, and it was really, really neat. And seeing these, these parents that came out to these things that probably don't come to conferences, probably don't come to a whole lot of other things inside the district was really, really neat. Kids were, had a great time, you know. So just, just on a pure student basis thing, I think it was a real neat way for us to reach these kids that we're not necessarily meeting in other sports. You know, they don't have the, you know, the, the background knowledge to go up for football, or they don't feel comfortable, because that's not something their, 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 their friends are doing, or they're, you know, they're not going out for basketball, because they're not in AAU, or they didn't have money to travel, you know. The, Mr. Huff came up with money to play for shin guards and jerseys and things. It was really, really neat. And it was fun seeing these kids and, you know, so the kid side of thing, I think is the most important thing, because I really do think we're meeting that need. But as a coach, it, you know, at both schools now, we have a list of kids that are interested in playing soccer, right? So I, I have a kid, I have a group of kids that are going to start in school at West, that I can track their grades for semester, that know my face, because I was at those practices, right? That I can send them an email, or even give them a call, or text, or get ahold of the parents and say, hey, where were you third hour today? And they're like, whoa, how do you know I wasn't in third hour? Well, don't worry about it. Just, we need to start working on that math grade, right? And we were able to get these kids, you know, hey, you need a physical to play sports. That, when they come to high school, these kids don't know that they, they need a physical. They don't know they need to come to practice every single day after school. If you don't come to practice and you're not passing your classes, you're, you're not going to play in these sports. And so I think we were able to share that information with a lot of kids that we probably didn't normally get to see that. Uh, and I, I have a, a group of kids coming in that I know for sure I can count on, that I think they're going to help us be competitive. They've learned some of our drills. They've learned some of our philosophies. Uh, and I think it's going to be really beneficial for us at West. And my day job's at East, and I can see even more important for, uh, East High as they move to this new conference, and they're trying to build a, a program, especially on the girl's side, where they're going to be starting a new program next year from scratch, essentially. And now they're going to have a group of names and, and get these kids involved that if they didn't play middle school soccer, they get to high school, and it's just more of the same. I'm not going to go out for sport. I've never gone out for a sport before. I don't, I don't know why. My parents don't think it's important. I, I'm not going to make that, that jump, that leap of faith. Whereas if we get them at the seventh and eighth grade level, we can kind of build that success or build that knowledge where they feel comfortable doing that at the high school level. And I think as, as we move forward, both schools, I see this as a, as a huge, huge plus for us.
What is the timeframe for the seventh and eighth grade soccer?
So I believe we did it the month of October. So we started, we had two weeks of practice, and then we did two games a week the last two weeks of October, so Tuesdays, Thursdays. Uh, we had that jamboree type setting where the kids would all meet us at Memorial, and we've got bus Memorial. We had four, four jamboree dates and.
The reason we selected that time of year is so our high school coaches would be available, whoops, sorry. The reason we selected that time of year primarily was so our high school soccer coaches could be involved. And all, all schools of the four middle schools had high school soccer coaches as part of their coaching team. Uh, and we think that was very beneficial. Plus, the weather's a little better. Bussing in the, in the spring is even, is really, really tricky. So we think it was a really good time of year to, to get it in.
How do you recruit kids?
Uh, so, you know, we're still learning, right? So this year, we, we had some flyers up and, you know, we may even had like an introductory meeting at all schools, but it was really just, uh, this is when the first day of practice is going to be. Have your physical done, have your paperwork in, and we're going to start October first, or whatever that Monday was. So, yeah, we certainly, and, and to be fair to everybody, we really didn't get the okay until much before that, you know. And so we can definitely do a much better job this fall, uh, trying to prep that as well. But we should have, you know, with those seventh graders coming back, we should have word of mouth within building that, you know, these eighth graders now walking around the hallways, that it was a fun learning experience for them too.
Do you have that bilingual, your flyers?
Uh, we, we will.
Okay. And I just noticed, I live near Liberty Park, and there's huge soccer matches. Like the other night, there were probably three hundred people there and, you know, playing soccer. So I'm like, what a great avenue that, to advertise.
Yes, yeah, it's one of those things where to get kind of soccer geeky on you, these, these kids are playing a lot of small-sided games with friends and pickup and stuff. By, by the time we get them to high school level, and they're trying to get them on a large scale, large field, they're kind of behind the eight ball. But if we can catch them a little bit earlier, it's a, it's a big, big plus for us.
And I, I want to piggyback on Sue, because we live by St. Ed's, and that park is used all the time too, uh, with a French-speaking population. So make sure that language is French.
Yeah, it would be more than just bilingual. It would be a lot of linguals.
And are the coaches paid, or are there stipends, or?
Um, Mr. Penning has volunteered, so we're. No, what we did is we looked at the middle school coaching pay for the other sports. And if it lasted something like thirty days or thirty-five days, we took the, the salary divided by thirty-five, so we had a daily rate. And then we counted the number of days the shortened middle school season would be, and we paid them. We're, we're, we start out hoping to have two coaches at each middle school. And if there's a, one school that has a big, big, huger number, we'll, we'll add coaches as, as we can.
I think the philosophy is good, Coach. I mean, you know, you think we have a, a lot of population that would be playing soccer and stuff, we don't necessarily see that. But, you know, organized sports aren't always the same in other countries. And we get our, our new students coming here from different places and, you know, find a way to engage them. And, you know, a lot of kids, I also think, same way as the swimming, I would say for both sports is, you know, a lot of kids aren't going to be out playing in club programs or, or travel teams that they have and, you know, the different things. So and I think for Waterloo, I think we have to homegrown or brought up our, our athletes into that. And the way to engage those numbers is, you know, look at ways that we can attract them earlier. And I think the middle school program for both these, swimming and soccer is going to be great, so.
Right. We have very, very few club players. Yeah, it was all, I would say, over ninety percent of our student athletes for the middle school soccer were non, non-club athletes.
And, yeah, but both sports really are, are sports of affluence. So offering this is filling a big gap. So, thank you.
Yeah.
So this adds to the whole theme of experience. So I think it's great. So then that begs the question, number one, why not sixth grade? And number two, do you foresee any need, facility needs to accommodate the full vision? Not just, not just swimming and soccer, but is, is the middle school vision to extend intermingles beyond those two?
So Mr. Huff might be able to answer these questions, but I assume we stay with seventh and eighth, because that was the program set up for the other middle school sports. So we're mirroring, you know, basketball is just a seventh and eighth grade program, right? Track, seventh and eighth grade program. As far as our facility needs at the middle school, if we're talking specifically soccer, we have, uh, there, there's some needs, you know, getting goals and places, you know, some, some places and have goals during practices. The, the fields inside the tracks at some of these middle schools leave a lot to be desired, you know. But for, for where we were at, we were just happy to be what we were at. If we're looking to really expand this and make this a, a truly awesome experience, rather than just a really, really, really good experience, yeah, there's, there's definitely some. yeah, there's, there's definitely some things that I'd love to sit down and have a conversation about, I guess.
But you anticipate, I mean, Memorial's not gonna handle everything, right? You're gonna have to have some competitions at, at the other middle schools or not?
We haven't fully came up with what our schedule looked like this year, but I, I really liked the idea to bring all, all the middle schoolers to one place. And we, we played sideways on the fields. We essentially had two games going on at once. Based on the fact, on numbers and, and coaching staffs and things like that, just to, so we didn't have a super long night as well. But yeah, I, I like the idea of having as many people there to make it kind of a, a family atmosphere deal across the district as well.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Henning or?
And just, we do have a, a sixth grade extramural op, uh, opportunity for the sixth graders. And he was right, the, the state associations do not allow sixth graders to participate in, in middle school or junior high, seventh and eighth grade sports or practices or anything, so we've gotta be a little careful there.
That's from the state, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody okay with it?
Just, just a quick question. I was just wondering, do you guys rent out the complex, the soccer complex for the, or do you plan on using the soccer complex out on Ridgeway?
The Cedar Valley Soccer. We, we use it for high school. I know they, some of the teams practice out there. We have Memorial is, is where everybody wants to be, but with three soccer teams, track teams. Soccer usually gets, they, would you get probably three or four games at Memorial and then the rest at Cedar Valley?
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the junior high, they'll practice on their green spaces. We're, we're gonna make sure they've got really good goals and, and whatever they need. We need to mark some of those fields off, we're gonna do that. We, we have a lot more time leading up to it than we, we did last year. So, yeah, that's where they practice there. And the thing about, that's nice about Memorial, like Coach said, is we can have two games going on. But when one game's over, I think each had two games they played, so we were able to switch fields and play, they each got to play a couple of games and didn't have to be bussed from one school to the next. Great question.
Is Carver set so you could do soccer field inside the track on yet, or is it not big enough?
Yeah, it would work for what we're doing, for sure. And I think that's where they, first off, the first couple of weeks, the football teams are on those fields. So we look at using green space, you know. And then once the football season's over, they get on the, is that how it worked at Hoover when you were there?
And those, those junior high fields are all in good condition, not mole holes and sprained ankles. Constant.
Be honest.
Yeah, we're, you know, they don't have irrigation, number one, and that makes it a little tricky. But probably like any of our, you know, green spaces, it's water-dependent and other things. And, but yeah, they, we could use a little work probably.
As we develop this program, I think that's a good use of money to get those fields up to stuff. Yeah, okay, approving the formation of middle school soccer and swim programs, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all for your work.
Congratulations.
It's exciting. Now we just gotta get the word out all over. Next, we'll go to item L on our agenda, and this is another exciting thing. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the formation of a girls' wrestling team at both East High and West High as presented.
Same with.
Second.
Thank you. And once again, I would like to, if possible, ask Coach Anthony Watson to, to come up. He is very, very involved in the, in the girls' wrestling scene, not only in this, in Waterloo, but the state of Iowa and even nationally. He's done some really good work and he's brought one of, which be, would be one of our first members of the, of the official teams, should it be approved. I'm gonna ask Coach Watson and his team, they've done a great job, by the way. I just told them, when I had kids that age, there'd have been no way they'd have been running around here.
I was like sitting here and I said to Pam, those two little kids back there are just like superb. They don't make a peep. Very nice job, Dad.
Again, my name is Anthony Watson, senior, juniors back there. Right now, I'm currently assistant wrestling coach at East and I coach track at Carver. I have been around the women's wrestling for about 10 years now. My oldest daughter is 14, so yeah, I started her about four years old. So I have, like Dan said, I've been around the state. I've touched a lot of females that are now in college and wrestling now, so hopefully they can put in a good word for her. But going into next year, yes, we are, I'm looking, I'm excited about this women's wrestling. I've been looking for it for some time now. I'm already starting to put, you know, talk to the other coaches about trying to get these girls to be able to do wrestling and play basketball. So I'm not trying to take anything away from the girls, but give them another platform to showcase their talent on. So I'm trying to recruit. I'm not that good at recruiting. And she's not either. She's not that outspoken. But I've been coming to games, basketball games, softball games, asking them, but you wanna try wrestling. It's, it's hard being a male, asking females to wrestle, you know, you, you understand that? So I'm trying. I made a little flyer. I, I picked up what you said, put it in another language. I'm gonna do that too. So I can do my part to try to get them to at least try it out.
Do you have a female assistant? I, I'm right here, okay. You're okay.
One of our former wrestlers, Jaden Bentley, I, I contacted her, trying to get her, get her certification and stuff, so she can. I'm like, cause I need a female. I can't go in the locker rooms. It's, I'm dealing with girl, I'm understanding, growing. There's certain things I cannot do as a male that I need a female in there to do. So I am looking, hopefully the, you know, the district and stuff is looking too. But I'm already touching bases. Look, you've been here. Would you like to come back and help out, you know, so?
Anthony, maybe one idea, you know, we've had a number of young ladies through East and West both now for years, before they sanctioned this. And I was fortunate enough to have my daughter decide to go out for two years and turn out to be one of her most memorable events in our high school in getting wrestled at the state tournament her senior year and won a couple of matches. And perhaps, you know, as a group, you know, if we got in touch with some of these, our, our female alumni wrestlers now, they, they might be willing to put out a message to help, like a video or some, something to send out, some words is to help recruit some other young ladies out. Because it might be, like you said, easier hearing it from some of those that maybe came before them, so.
Help me out.
Yeah, if, like I said, I'd be glad to help in any way there, Mr. Huff too. If it's something we can collectively do for both schools to just help get the numbers, so.
Yeah, and if there are things that you struggle with, be sure you have some good people. Mr. Huff and that, Mr. Moses and at West, the new AD, and Tom Ulis is it?
Halsus.
Yeah, Halsus, okay. And, you know, just let us know because we wanna see you succeed. I mean, this is awesome.
Yeah, I would say the biggest thing now is promoting. You know, it, like I said, it just got sanctioned this year, so they're not really aware of it. They more thinking still wrestling, I gotta wrestle the boys. No, not no more. This was the last year you can do that. Now it's girl on girls, so.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe, you know, get some help through our communications department to try to get, you know, with offseason, how to get some information out, you know, and.
I dropped the ball. I wanted to get in the parade. I wanted to get in the parade, have a big W women's wrestling sign. But I, I just walked with my elementary school. I was like, dang it, next year I'll be ready. Don't worry about it.
And, you know, it's gonna be a learning experience. And if you find the niche of one or two girls, I mean, how exciting that they'll be the inaugural of this, just to only get bigger and better, so.
Starting off, I got four.
Awesome.
I got four girls. That is, I'm still recruiting.
Okay.
Any more? I was just gonna make a joke. We can put Dr. Smith on the, on the hotspot here because, you know, I am a diehard wrestling fan. Everybody, I think everybody knows that. I've got two wrestlers of my own and nothing pleased me more than to have them choose wrestling. I was super excited about that. So now we'll see the extent to which Dr. Smith is a wrestling fan.
I remember this guy.
Okay, all right. All right, okay, okay. So see, you're in good hands.
All right, well, any more questions, comments for?
Just thank you, Coach Watson, for taking this on. It's, it is, it's a lot to do and, and you keep apologizing for things you haven't done. Focus on what you've done and keep building.
Awesome. We're proud, yeah, like she said, we're very proud of you, so thank you. All right, all in favor of the girls' wrestling team, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven zero.
All right, Day Day.
Based on what I've seen on Facebook.
You're up. She's up next, all right.
A backflip and a, another whatever those things you were doing. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. We're excited about it and.
Thank you, Coach Watson.
And Day Day is an amazing wrestler. I have seen her wrestler, wrestle, and I would not want to take you on. Very good.
And keep up the good work with those younger kids. You're awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay, now we're going to move on to Exhibit M. And it is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the substitute pay increase as proposed.
So moved. Second.
And we have Kingsley here to assist us and a little PowerPoint here, so go ahead.
Well, this is just for the substitute pay increase. So the, the documents that you're getting now is for the next agenda item. But what I wanted, what Michael and I just briefly talked about, and that's kind of the blessing with working with Michael and obviously working with Jane. You know, sometimes an idea literally happens right away and then we try to transform that into something that can be reoccurring. This also came from, from some conversations with our union. I know Amber McGivern's in the audience. As far as I did promise her before I left to look at sub pair of pay, and so this is what we did. What we're proposing before you is approving the, the percentage amount. So as we make changes to the pay over time, that percentage continues to increase. So my hope is, one, this helps Mr. Spaghetti not have to come before you anymore with substitute pay. Two, it greatly increases our opportunities to find subs in the area by moving from 130 a day to now 145 a day. We heard a lot of concerns from subs that maybe, may not be able to participate in the substitute bonus. But we're wanting to see pay increase from that perspective. But also making sure that we have, and Jane's heard me say this a lot, and I think it's actually her word is, making sure that we have a bench. And so many of our sub pair positions, our custodial positions in particular, are, are ways that people can just get their feet wet and interact with Waterloo schools. And this does it at a pay rate that makes it, so they can, so they can make that choice, so they can maybe move away from their job. There's more than enough work, there's more than enough opportunity. When you're talking about food service, you're talking about custodial, or even pair of subs. This helps a lot, again, I think, address our teacher sub issue as far as getting us above average when it comes to not only the 145, but then the 25 flat rate for long-term subs to get us up to 170. And so this will hopefully be the last time or opportunity that, you know, the district will ever have to propose that subpay increase. Because again, every time that you see the increase with staff, it will help generate a new number for subpay.
So I, I must have not read this right. So the $25 a day is additional? Cause it, it just read kind of funny that additionally, all long-term subs get a flat $25 a day.
Correct. So, yeah, so it's addition to, so, yeah, it's in addition to, sorry about that. It's, so it's 145 for all short-term subs, which is 60%, 66% of the, the generator base, which would be step one of our current teacher salary schedule. And, you know, long-term subs get that $25.
And then why, why is there the discrepancy in the increase between like pair of subs versus food service subs who both were at 12?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's because the increase, our, our food service subs are well-paid. Prior to the change of the increase that you gave across the board for $3 for all these positions, our food service sub made about $15 an hour, so they're now making about $18 an hour. And that's in line with other food service, you know, organizations, you know, that you see, either restaurants, whatever the case may be. And so we pay our food service employees from an hourly standpoint on that scale. And that's why you see it's higher than our pairs. Does that make sense? So our food service subs next year would make, our general cooks would make $18. Our pair of subs at the base level would make 1623. That's why you see that large gap.
Oh, okay.
And it was last year that we made the increase out of COVID?
Yeah, technically, no, it was technically this school year that we made the $3 increase.
$3, okay, okay, so we're coming back.
Across the board, yep.
So the generator base is the one that we use for the regular, the certified teachers, is that right?
That's all, anytime we were adding, you know, $1,000 or $600, whatever the case may be to the salary schedule, it's always on that base.
And the, the current rate is $25 a day less than the 145, is that? Is it 120 our current?
130 is our current rate.
So they, they get the 25 a day extra for long-term?
Correct. So don't pay attention, yeah, I, I messed, I may have messed it up trying to write too quickly. Basically, the 145 for next year will be what we give to our teachers for a short term, substitute teachers for a short term. And then anybody that goes into long-term gets the 145 plus an additional 25 per day.
And long-term is what?
170.
How many days is long-term?
Oh, any days after 10. Should have to be in the, the position for 10 days.
10 in the same, in the same.
In the same position, correct.
Like coming to work for the same teacher.
Correct.
Maternity leave would be a good example of long-term.
And this is all in, in addition to what we approved with the, the schedule, the, it was like a longevity increase?
Yeah, so, no, this is separate, so we're talking about subs. So we, we did that with our full-time and part-time employees. These are subs that we're trying to make this change to.
And then we have mapped it out, sustainability beyond Esper, Esper.
Correct.
Okay. And then I was asked by a former employee, do we give any incentive if they come in with district experience?
We haven't yet. I, that was a question that came up as well. I'll leave that to my successor to try to figure out. It makes it tough because, you know, who, who's to say that I'm doing, you know, more work in this situation when I don't have a degree? I would say, tell you that the building sub, everybody's gone. The building sub position that we created to get more community members into the classroom was designed, one, at the community, I mean, talking with the community and thinking about that concern. But I would tell you, many of our building subs that are, that are from our community, Carolyn Stevenson, and there's many others, I can't remember. I shouldn't have started with a name, but they do transformational work in those buildings. And so it's, it's tough to manage that, and so I'll leave that issue for next time.
Well, because they had mentioned to me, like, you can go to McDonald's with no experience there and get 15 an hour or whatever. And so they have the district experience.
And to be a long-term, you have to actually, you can't just have a sub off. You have to have a teaching degree. Is, that's how it was before? Is that still?
Yeah, so that's correct. They haven't, they've gone back away from that COVID legislation. Actually, when the governor removed her, or when the, her, the governor's powers, what's the word I'm looking for? Ended or eclipsed?
Emergency discretion.
Yeah, eclipsed. We lost that ability to have substitute authorizations in those long-term vacancies.
I'm just feeling like I'm not understanding something when it's saying pair of subs would increase from 12 to 1298 and custodials from 14 to 17. So like the numbers you were giving are different. Someone can, later can just explain it to me, because I don't.
So right now, basically, right now, our current pair of subs are paid $12. If you multiply, oh, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
If you multiply 80% of $16.23, it jumps to $12.98. The same.
Okay, so the, the new one is based on percentages, which is what, that's what I wasn't getting. My food service jumped so much higher because it's based on.
It's based on the percentage, so it's based on .8. And so if you multiply that by their starting salary base, it's always been higher than the pair of subs or custodians are always, so that's why it's off.
It's not just the flat rate anymore, it's based on, okay.
That's correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's great. Anybody have any further questions or comments? All in favor then of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven zero. Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to Item N, which is also Kingsley. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the 22 equal, 2022 equal opportunity and affirmative action plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, please.
All right, so this is just taking a minute, last meeting, come on, we'll get to it.
They need to turn it on, Pam.
Can I toggle to it?
Yep, down below. Hit your toggle.
And you should have the slides in front of you as well.
It is in front of us, yep.
Okay, good. All right. Good deal. So I'm going to run through this as quickly as possible because it's a nice day outside. But what I've always come to you every two years is with the AA EEOC report. I'm also coupling that with the Equity Plan. So I'm going to talk about the Equity Plan last and what that means with the work with the Equity Committee. So what is the Affirmative Action Equal Opportunity Employment Plan? This is a compliance document that we do because of the Iowa Administrative Code. So it's something that happens from a BIANO standpoint, we have to present that to the board and get your approval. The difference here is that the information in the plan hasn't necessarily changed. We're just sharing to you the strategies to make sure we get your approval before we move forward. This is just briefly talking about the strategic plan focus areas and how those matter. As you're transitioning and Dr. Lindeman and, oh, Dr. Smith's gone. Dr. Lindeman and Dr. Smith have been talking consistently about what the strategic plan means. And I know there's been a lot of conversations about equity and how equity plays a role within the strategic plan moving forward.
As this related, for years we were under a voluntary desegregation plan from the state.
This is, this, this is only about staff. This is not about, are we talking about, we're not talking about students. This is just about staff.
Yes, it's completely different.
All right.
Yep. So as you can tell, and again, I know this is being live streamed, so I'll try to be animated as I wanted some of the audience to see this information as well. Because while there are some challenges, we've had some really good diversity over time. And so you're looking at from 2016 to 2022, you've seen kind of that upward crescendo of how we approach this, this conversation about diversity and staffing and what that means and what this means for our school district, especially Waterloo. One of the other data points is just employees of color that, again, it's not about just looking at the information in aggregate. It's just aggregating the data to see how are you actually attacking different points. So the conversation today, I apologize, I bit my tongue, and so right now it is like playing up in my mouth. But we had a conversation today with Dr. Smith, our Director of Special Education. She mentioned that, you know, we don't have the same level of diversity with special education teachers. What are we doing about that? How can we target that population to do a better job? And that's why we disaggregate that information because we want to know or see we have some areas of growth. This is another data point, and again, I'm sharing it with you for two different purposes. One, obviously, because of the work that we're doing, but two, because, you know, also to make sure you're informing the board and the community as well as far as the work that's happening. Unfortunately, what doesn't happen as much as should happen, and I'm hoping that Mr. Spaghetti will do a better job, we don't rave enough about what we're doing. As you can see from this, we do have some problematic racial mismatches from that perspective. But we are, we are working on it, we are getting better. What we tried to do now is say, okay, we have certain buildings that are doing a better job. How can we target the other buildings so they, they focus on it as well? Sometimes it's just a shift in the demographic population. That's why I talked to you about it being a puzzle. You know, there was a level of diversity over a pointer. There was a couple individuals that retired about two years ago, prior to, I mean, during COVID. And so those things transform and make the data look different that we're showing with you today. The cool, 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 cool thing that I'm super excited about is all the different strategies that we've tried to employ from a strategic plan standpoint, all the leadership from Dr. Lindeman to allow, you know, me to play around in this weird, weird game of, you know, chess when it comes to talking about diversity, is the gains that we've made across the board. You know, again, it was, you know, Mr. Berry did a wonderful job of articulating some of the challenges that are still there and still ever-present. But we've never been higher. As far as our, our data, when you're looking at it for the red line or teachers, that's the top in the state. I mean, that's blowing people out of the water. And my conversation with Mr. Spaghetti last Wednesday was, if you can keep on the plan of, of what we're trying to do, I believe we can get to 15 to 20%. We just need to continually put that diversity at the forefront, which is unheard of not only in the state, but in the nation as well. And that's why I'm on all these conferences and calls, because again, nobody's looking at 8.8% diversity in their teacher, and I'm just talking about teachers. Going beyond that, if you look at the, oh, I'm looking at here, sorry, if you look at the blue line, we're talking about our admin. How we've had the level of diversity in admin, and again, that's not this year, that's not for next year, that's our 2021, 2022 data. So some of that will come off because, you know, I'm leaving in a sense. And so, just to be frank.
Just one.
Yeah, just, just one person, it will, it will drop the percentage down a little bit. So I just want you to make sure you know that data point does change or, or will change because of that. But you see the kind of upward trajectory and the intentionality. And, you know, again, because I'm on the soapbox and I get an opportunity to give Dr. Lindeman some kudos, I, I don't think you know how rare it is to have two associate superintendents that were people of color. I don't think you know how rare it is to see that 34% or 33% as it pertains to its admin. You know, I get a lot of accolades, but without Dr. Lindeman's leadership, without the HR team that we have, this doesn't happen. And it's a constant conversation. We joke about, we talk about, we strategize. It happens every single second of every single day. And that's what I was alluding to, the West situation, as far as what can we do differently? How do we bring diverse talent in? How do we focus on the talent, talking about Jeff and the teacher pathways and what we can do to focus on students coming up? The work with you and I, I had a conversation with Dr. Mahalan, there's a list of 20 students that I'm still trying to see if we can get them in the teacher program. You and I said they would pay for it. So all these avenues are happening and they present this right here that you see from this standpoint, that again, it blows us out of the water. I mean, Waterloo is doing that. And then you see other staff in general where I think we do a good job, and this goes back to Mr. Berry's point. We do a good job at our entry-level positions. How can we shift that? How can we change that? That's why the Teach Waterloo program is so important. That's why the branches of the Teach Waterloo program, because it's not just the, the piece that you approved. It's also when people come to us with, a Latinx individual came to us and said, hey, I, I can't pay for, I mean, I've already gone through the program, I paid for it myself, but I need to help with student teaching. Yes, you know, as long as you stay with us for this time period, we'll bring you onboard, and that's another part of a Teach Waterloo program. So it's such a cool and amazing and delicate tapestry to be able to show you the data in this sense, because it's kind of like golf, right? Or at least my golf game. I know where I'm at typically, I mean, throughout the game, but then you see at the end and it's like, you know, really, really bad. But this is really, really good in that sense. And so we've really done the work and a lot of kudos has to go to the team because of what they've been able to do.
So I know that, again, we're shifting reins and, and so is it a benchmark? Is it a goal? Is it very critical for Anthony and Dr. Smith to be able to be on the same page so we can continue to have the same trajectory, uh, excuse me? Thank you, trajectory, to keep going in that same direction? More so like, this is very, one of the, very important, like top five, like this is important.
Yeah, it is. And I, I mean, Esther said it, you know, eloquently when he was talking about it before, Waterloo is unique. I've had to ingratiate myself in the community to truly understand how unique Waterloo is. And there's an ability here to do some things that I wasn't even able to touch in Iowa City. And so, you know, taking or extrapolating that information and transferring that to Anthony, transferring that to Dr. Smith to make sure that continues, the framework is there, and that's what we're going to talk about with the Equity Plan. The framework is there, the team members are there to do that work. It's really just your continued vested interest in continuing the work. And as Dr. Lindeman leaves, it's again, sharing that information with Dr. Smith because it doesn't happen other places. We don't have 33% diversity in admin. It just doesn't happen. I mean, and you can, you can research it yourself. I mean, that's something I spend, part of it's being competitive. But part of it is, it just doesn't happen that way, not, definitely not in Iowa. But even as you're talking about where I'm from in the South, it's still unheard of, especially at the levels that we have, the level of diversity. And so, you know, again, I'm excited about it because again, you know, you, you know the data, I knew it was high, but seeing that, even today, I was like, oh my God, I can't believe that's crazy. I can't believe we're, we're moving so far along those lines. But it's a testament to the work that, again, everybody has been doing. The, my conversations with Michael about, you know, do what, figure out what you want and we'll make it work. Those things have to happen and those things don't happen without your flexibility and focusing on the work and moving it forward.
I had a question, it's only this much off topic, I promise. So what, I was going to ask before with the Teach Waterloo.
Yeah.
Do we provide other supports as well when we have the cohorts going through? Like, my son just graduated from ISU and he received services to help him with any issues he had because he has a learning disability.
Yeah.
Right? So these are, if, if we have folks coming through, do we provide services to, to give them any assistance that they need or is this done through you and I or?
That's done through you and I, but the brilliant, the brilliant piece of Dawn coming onboard and knowing the system is she provides that coaching element as well. So yes, that those, you know, specific assistance needs are provided by you and I because they're doing the classes. But there's obviously a need to make sure that there's a Waterloo aspect that they know as far as they're coming into our program and knowing what's different or what's nuanced or what's, you know, available in Waterloo.
Do we do like any mentoring also? Is that part of it, obviously?
Using Phaedra, I can't remember her last name.
Roby.
Phaedra Roby, okay, I wasn't sure, I was about to say Blinn. Phaedra Roby over at Lincoln, that's also another avenue that we're trying to, trying to do and perpetuate as we move forward. So I highlighted Dawn. There's about three or four people that are, are tagged on to leading this Teach Waterloo effort.
Okay, I just, just trying to look at the red line that if we have this many staff, like, we can, can.
The criticality of it and the trick is going to be really accessing that teacher pathway pipeline. The math is easy. I mean, and I'm not a mathematician like Jane is. If as long as we are able to talk to and discuss what teaching is and, and Lyle's conversation or commentary and, and push to continue to increase our staffing salary, it makes teaching a sexier option than many other jobs, especially in this climate. So we have to, one of the things we didn't get to do was we didn't get to do the teacher education clubs. We were going back and forth with you and I and University of Iowa about them paying for the clubs and coming up with the money, where we probably should have done it ourselves, but I was trying to make it more collaborative than us just doing everything. So those are some of the things that, again, Anthony and Dr. Smith can continue on and, and just keep that work going. Because again, the framework is there. We built it. Some of it had to pause because of COVID and I feel like if it wasn't for COVID, those numbers would have been higher.
Yeah, the challenge with, with teaching, obviously, because we have so many more teachers, you know, just a couple hires, we barely move the needle. You really have to, it's a focused effort to get a, a, a much bigger quantity of openings. And, you know, hopefully, we, hopefully we don't have openings that we have to go through this, but, you know, obviously you get some.
Well, and again, it's not only recruiting, but it's retaining. It's making sure that our Black and Brown educators feel important in the system. And it's tough, you know, because they're not only looking through the lens of just a, a regular teacher, but sometimes they're looking at a lens from a, a teacher who is also a personal color. Sometimes they're looking at through a lens of the teacher who's a personal color that's also from Waterloo. And that's not a bad thing, it's just that there are challenges that you have to, you know, that you have to grow through and be a part of that really speaks to the resiliency and grit that our teachers, our teachers have, especially our Black and Brown educators. But we also have to figure out how to coach that, how to help, how to make sure that we're supportive as well.
And that's what I, I didn't mean like these teachers needed support like my son. I meant that kind of support.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We do provide that, we're still continuing. There's some things that we did even over COVID that we're going to have to continue on. And I'll speak to that when we talk about the Equity Plan briefly.
Thank you.
This increase from tornado to tornado is remarkable, and I don't want to diminish it in any way, but is there any fuzziness in the data? I know that if you look at the state reports, they kind of changed the definition, particularly on the student minorities. There's some undeclared, it depends on how you classify that. And then it went from two or more to multi-race.
And that counts in, minority, that counts as minority whether they call it. So there hasn't been a ton of wiggle room in that, or a ton of change over in that.
How many people are in these groups though? Because the, the blue group would be the least number.
Correct. That would be our administrators. There's only about, what, Jane, 50 to 60, 70 people in there?
Building in about, yeah, about 60.
Yeah.
And the, and the red line is mathematically, we're, yeah, we're, it's the hardest to move because we have 900 teachers. So, you know, 1% is. 10% is 90, right? So what, yeah, so nine. I mean, you're only changing, for every nine teachers, it's 1% up. So when you change, I mean, we're looking at.
I think, I saw Jane, how Jane tried to do that. She put, totally threw the whole board under the bus by doing the math.
I was just, I was just, I was a teacher for a moment, so. And I don't know if we compared to, if we compared to some of the other urbans, I know that I would, I would say that we are higher than any other urban.
Yeah, there's actually a small district that has about 15%. Because based on their teacher ratio, they only have like seven or 10, 10 to 15 teachers. But that one provides a huge percentage. So obviously, that's the competitive focus of like, how do we get that district? But yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a fudge, Lyle, I mean, these, we don't have as much wiggle room. We always incorporate two or more races or multiple ethnicities in these categories.
It's so long overdue, if you think about the fact that Waterloo's diversity started in like, you know, 1910 to 1940. We're, we're 100 years out from that and we, we still haven't won the problem. So this is such good work, such good work, and keep it up because we owe so much to our diversity here in Waterloo to make sure that our kids see the right faces in the classroom.
Well, I didn't pay you for it, but that's a brilliant segue because ultimately, when we think about the, we talked about with our administrators this morning, diversity is a strategy. As we've been able to transform our, our, our health options for our, our staff here in Waterloo, that was a conversation with the VP of Health Partners about how health is a strategy, how we'll be able to recruit different. And now that I'm moving into another job, I'm telling you, it's vastly different. Waterloo has a really good and competitive package that I'm going to try to figure out how I can bring there because it's such a, it's what people, that people don't know, because, you know, again, sometimes they've just been associated with the school system to see what other entities do. But again, diversity being a strategy, you know, I give talks all the time, but it's something that, it's, it's more of a lip service. It's more of a lip service that, you know, Jane brought to associate superintendents of color. I mean, that's more of a lip service. And so continuing that model and having those conversations is important. But this is what you're approving today. It's just making sure that we're continuing with these goals and strategies for 2022 and onward. I'm highlighting those two pieces that as we participate in national minority teacher recruitment fairs, as those become more in-person now, some of that's happened online. You know, again, still having the board and board's prerogative to continue that work. Enhancing relationship with HSIs, obviously, you know the work with Lincoln University and continuing to work with HBCUs historically, Black colleges, institutions, or universities, institutions. But HSIs are Hispanic-serving institutions, so it's, it's continuing that work. It's, so what I don't want you to think is like you're approving the details and everything along those lines. You're just approving the goals to make sure that the board is aware and is okay with our work moving forward. And just to be clear, because I always make sure I do this as well, this is not kicking anybody out of the job or doing anything along those lines. This is about how recruiting talent into the area. And our, if you look at our data, our teachers want that. I mean, that's what they say, that's what our staff say is very important because that, that racial mismatch or racial mismatch is daunting in some cases in some buildings. And so we're trying to do as much as possible to really address that issue.
How far back does the data go about staff makeup?
Oh, it goes back a while. We have to work on pulling it just because some of that may be in paper. And so we have to work on how do we, how do we extrapolate some of that information, but it goes back for some time. We could pull it from applicant tracking for at least maybe 15 years.
Right. I mean, because I remember when I was in school here, I barely even saw mail in a building, except the janitor. I mean, it was very blind, you know, at that time. So I just think even from then, which is a long time ago, but it, we have gone a long ways to, to improve me, so.
So switching gears, any more questions in regards to that information? Switching gears is to the Equity Plan. Obviously, I didn't present it to the, or excuse me, to the community today. But the Equity Plan is just for information only, it's a draft. The reason why I'm tying that is that it is my brain spilled out on a page. One of the things that I do regret, or I will regret, is that I didn't do enough to make sure that some of the pieces that I just consistently think about and push forward is written down or in a procedure that can be followed. And so a lot of that work is going to be what Stacy has mentioned from the Equity Committee, to continue that work moving forward. And so that's why you see that draft Equity Plan. It encompasses not just HR, hiring and staffing, it encompasses all parts of PACE. Everybody is culpable or everybody is a part of this work as far as how we make sure that it's not just about diversity of staff, but it's how we're looking at curriculum, how are we looking at our community engagement, how are we focusing on our achievement gap? And so all those things are there. And these are the conversations that I have with Akui, these are the conversations that I have with Dr. Mulholland. Just put on a page, so there's at least some. So there's at least some level of going back to and having the conversations with. So we've just briefly talked about it with the Equity Committee. You know, they approved some of the basic elements of the focus, but there's still a lot more work to do. And there's still some changes yet that the Equity Committee has made to this draft that you see before you today. We just weren't able to incorporate it in time. And so it, there's questions, definitely take questions. That's more for your general reading and perspective, but I wanted to make sure you had that because you see the AAEOC report, but the larger model as far as what happens on the equity side of my position is really encompassed in that plan and encompassed through multiple departments, which again, is different than the other district. Now get off my soapbox in one second. Last thing I'll say. One of the things I think is brilliant about Waterloo that's different than any other district is typically you have a separate equity director to do that work. While it is tough to do it in conjunction with the role of HR, it needs to have that level of responsibility or a level of authority, or I would tell you the work doesn't get done. At this point, unfortunately, I'm be ending my tenure on June 30th as the longest-tenured Equity Director in the state of Iowa. You know my age. That's a problem. And so how do you make sure that that continues on with Anthony, with Dr. Smith? In that focus, in that, having that focus at that level. That doesn't mean Evan is our Equity Inclusion Data Analyst. That doesn't mean there's other people that aren't helping with that work. You've seen Sharice come up here and talk about things. But you have to make sure that it's spread out throughout the organization because what has happened in other districts, and I'm not trying to, you know, say anything about other districts as they're listening potentially, is that when they put people of color in those positions, it's almost a recipe for disaster and fail because they're expected to figure out everything. And that was daunting in Iowa City when I took on that role, including with staffing. It's, it was easier here because of the conversations with Dr. Mohorn and Dr. Lindeman that we had on a regular basis. That equity is something that we all share, that every single employee is a part of, that every single board member is a part of as well. So I just want you to remember that things may change, you know, transitions may happen, you may go a different route. That's fine. But just remember that level that equity has had in our district, it matters. And we're able to make changes on a dime compared to working through multiple people just to get stuff done. And I have multiple examples, but share that for another day.
Oh, thank you so much for your work. I mean, we all really appreciate it. And hopefully it will continue forward. We may call you with questions, you know.
Just, just up the street.
Yeah, okay. I know where you live. Okay. All in favor of approving the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Plan carries 7-0. And as we have removed the Irving Bus Lane, we will move on to Exhibit P, which is the first reading of policies. And Pam will be discussing those with us at this time.
Sorry. Okay, so we have two before you tonight. The 200.3 School Board Powers and Duties and 212.0 Minutes. On 200.3, that was adding verbiage to make it consistent with IASB policy. That was actually, excuse me, that was a policy primer that is sent out by IASB. They occasionally will send things that are not on that five-year rotation, but it's something that maybe legislation has changed or something that they look at and see that this is important verbiage to put into that policy. So that is what the School Board Powers and Duties is. Okay?
Yeah. I read it and don't fully understand it. So the addition, will the board? Does this eliminate the board from being involved in expulsion hearings?
No. What it, the quasi-judicial duty, essentially what it's telling us is that the board is not involved at a lower level type of. The, the best example is that you would not be involved in personnel decisions because someday you might have to go to a termination hearing. So it's taking out that you're not gonna be involved in those decisions as it gets to a litigation potential. So you still have the, the termination hearing because that's actually taken it to that level. You would not be involved on a, at a high school level with a high school disciplinary action. That would be your quasi-judicial. So you're not involved at that level because it could come to a termination hearing.
Got it. So. Back to student expulsions. That could be appealed. So I don't understand. It seems like this disqualifies the board from being involved in this, in the initial decision.
But if it's appealed, then it's taken to the next level.
No, it, it does say, it says we're part of the, the very first sentence. So the board fulfills its quasi-judicial duties in serving as that neutral arbiter for hearings related to student suspension or expulsion proceedings. So we are, it's, it's just like it's always been. We, we, we are that first, that last step in the district. But then if they sue or whatever, then that's beyond us, right?
So if you look down below, it's just, it's really clarifying the board, the third line from the end. The board does not investigate or become involved in student disciplinary matters or employment matters. We are, the administrators are the people who do that. You are serving as a, the quasi-judicial is what they're saying. So kind of the judge, the judge in this. So you're, so you, you're the neutral arbiter. And so you have to wait. You can't be involved in the investigation because you will have to serve as the determiner. That's the role. And it even says you cannot delegate that job. That is your job.
So determining whether or not a student should be expelled.
That's your job.
Is not being involved in student disciplinary matters.
You are not involved as the investigator.
We don't do the legwork. We just sit on the jury and we make the decision.
But the verbiage says or become involved in student disciplinary matters. We're not allowed to do that.
Could we add something about at the investigatory level?
If that would help, yeah, that's really what it means.
Disciplinary matters at the investigatory level.
You do not become involved in them until it should come before you. So you don't do that until, and you never have. So this is just a clarification of the law.
And you're preserving our neutrality. That's what we're doing.
And we come before it and would require the board to serve.
And the same would apply to teacher.
Yes. And that is, that is.
All right.
Authority that is not only granted to you, but you are the only ones who can serve in that role. And you cannot delegate it to anybody else. Do you, do you think there's some additional verbiage there that would be helpful to future board members?
Well, it's just a matter of defining what involved in student disciplinary matters is. Our employment matters, you know, involved at what level?
Yeah, why don't we add a little bit of something before the next time, just to clarify that? Yeah.
We'll just take a or become involved.
I think it's just does not investigate or become. I liked in student disciplinary matters prior to the determination of the consequences or something like that.
I was just saying, or becoming, I think that maybe the word is, the phrasing is or become involved, does not investigate. Oh, I see what you mean. Never mind, never mind.
Well, what if you just took that out? The board does not investigate student disciplinary matters or employment matters.
Semi-colon, rather, the board.
I don't know.
But the board also does not determine consequences. That is not, you do not do that. So that is not, so it really is becoming in it student disciplinary matters prior to the, we'll, we'll play with something and run it by you. We'll figure out something that's clearer in there.
To board action.
Prior to the quasi-judicial.
What are you talking about?
We'll come up with something there.
All right.
I'm still looking for the word become. Stop playing.
We'll clarify it.
Okay, sorry, I'm just writing down a note here.
Okay, Pam, this is a little one. Pam, just where in the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph, when it says the board delegates the superintendent to its authority to carry out board policy, did we miss a capitalization on that one? We were, we were doing, we're doing all kinds of like super OCD stuff with getting it all. And then the same with, on the next one, it's the paragraph that starts with minutes. And it just says waiting approval at the next board meeting.
Okay, so, and this is all like with.
These are not, this is just a capital.
Right. So you're just, the decision from policy review has been anytime board is in verbiage, it is capitalized. Is that correct?
That's how we've been, unless it's like talking about a board, not the board.
Okay.
Does that make, I guess, that's kind of how we've been, you might want to ask one of the English teachers who's on the committee, how we've been doing it. We're just trying to get it to be across the board.
Across the board. No pun intended.
You don't, I don't think you capitalize it if you're talking about a board meeting, but you would talk to, you would capitalize it if you're talking about them as an entity.
But up in the very top one, we, we have board meetings capitalized.
Yeah, that should not be.
Okay.
And the bottom.
We.
We'll fix that. We'll fix that.
Bottom paragraph as well, to the board.
But that one is.
That should be. But board meetings, board minutes, we'll get it, we'll get it. We'll get it. Yep. You're right, yep.
And then I forgot, Pam, when, if we discussed this one or not, the last paragraph on 72, the board secretary, did we determine, is this like always gonna be the board secretary's job? So is that why it's in the policy? I know you told me that it, it had been before to be the one who. Oh, wait, this is the, never mind. Yes, that was, I was thinking, I was thinking it was the review itself.
Yeah.
No, yes.
No, yes, that will be, that will be.
Okay, so that was information only. Pam, we'll work on those and bring that back.
Any other questions on 212? We didn't.
Sorry.
Yeah, no. That should be good.
Okay, so now we will move on to the very last Lindeman Superintendent Report.
Yes, thank you. So it is not lost on me that it is the last meeting, but it's also not lost on me that it's, we've been at this for multiple hours. So I will be as brief as I possibly can, but I also want to take advantage of the fact that it is my last and just make a couple comments. So, you know, first of all, just thank you. I, I just have been so grateful to be in this position. I just, I wrote each of you guys a thank you and I just, I put it here. But I, I hope you, you read it because I just, I tried to really share with you how I feel about each of you and how grateful I am for this experience. So thank you so much for that. And Lyle, your analytics and your vision, second to none. I wrote in your card, you know, I'm, I'm better because you are, you are here with me and I just am so grateful. Janelle, your lens on teacher, teachers and because you want, you know, you were a teacher and you're coming with that. That's, that's amazing. You're only, you're the only one on the board that was serving in that role. That lens is critical. Aster, you, you have consistently looked at different issues from multiple lenses. And you are very good at that. And I'm so grateful for the fact that you're constantly looking like, well, what, what might this person, you know, whereabouts this? What if you look at it from this way? I think you do that very well and I'm grateful for that. Sue, you're always trying to strike a balance between leadership and accountability. You know, pushing, but also thinking about people. And I just, you, you, that just is gonna resonate with me for a very long time. India, your focus on community and what they might think and how they feel and how that impacts our work. It's noted and ingrained in my brain and I really appreciate that. Jesse, you're constantly talking about support for our staff, support for our families, support for our students. I can just, I can just hear it in your voice saying, you know, well, what supports might we need to wrap around? I just, that's, that's just gonna stick with me. And Stacy, the power of questioning and the power of asking, I want to make sure I understand this. Help me see the connections. I got it in my brain and I'm gonna, you know, I just, I appreciate that. So all of you, I just am so grateful. And for the other staff that are here, you know, Pam and I have walked this walk for a very long time. And sitting at these board meetings, you know, really a lot of hours, I actually did a little bit of calculation. I have, this, I've been at 264, yes, because that's what I do. I've been at 264 regular board meetings and then you add all of these others. I mean, it's into the hundreds. We spend a lot of time together. And so, but it's, it's really a privilege to be able to lead. It really is. And so, and I know you all feel that way too. So Kingsley, gotta make a statement about you on your very last meeting as well, unless Pam is successful in, you know, having another one here before. We just know, I mean, you have just done such amazing work and you've followed an amazing person and you've even taken it further. And I know both you and I have said, we want the people to follow us to be even better because that's how we honor our mission, our legacy, but also the district's work. So thank you for everything you do. Thank you for being innovative, creative, pushing me. I have often, you know, talked about hiring Kingsley and he's, he's the best example of me hiring somebody who is not like me, who would not think like me because we get a better product. When you hire people that don't think like you, you've got one, Jane, you've got one, Kingsley. You need others, right? So I just am so grateful you have taught me that. I've learned so much from you. And I'm gonna be watching your career because it's gonna be fun and I just will, and I'll have plenty of time to do that because I'm not working anymore. So I will do that. So thank you for, for all of that. You know, Stephanie's not here. She had to leave a little bit early, but you know, just been a go-to for me. Michael, Aqui, give up lots of meetings to be here, the, the people before them. We've had, you know, Bev and Charles and Tara. We've spent a lot of time together at board meetings and we've accomplished so much for this district and for that, I'm, I'm, you know, just, it's amazing. You know, my wish, I hope that we stay true to the mission because I've always said this and it's, it can seem a little bit callous, but let me explain what I mean. When I say it's really not about the adults, the decisions. Now, we have to pay attention to the adults, but we have to stay true to our mission of serving our kids. And the adults is how we get there, but that's, that's a means to the end, you know? So I really want us to just stay committed and I know that you will do that. We have such great staff. We have such great administrators. We have so many people who just give hours and hours. And I'm just blessed to be part of that. Stay the course on the social emotional learning. You know, Roe was here tonight and, and talking about that. And we have to care for our students, but we also have to care for our staff because they are a means to the end. They matter. They matter deeply. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done on salaries and trying to make sure we're compensating people for, you know, for, for the hard work that is education. And if she's writing on the courier, I bet we're getting, I'm talking too fast here, you know, supporting students. And I also, you know, when people, one of the interview questions that they will ask a lot of times for leaders, they'll say, describe your leadership style. And very often, they've taught us in administrative school, there are certain answers and then it changes. And then you can tell the people who have been through their program more recently because they say autocratic is my, and then it was supportive. And then it was, you know, so there's all of these things. My leadership style has always been really defined and it's not in any book. It's a made up thing in my mind, is really this trust but verify. You have to trust. You hire really good people. You lay out the vision. You make it really clear, but you do verify that the work is being done because if you don't do that, you can waste really valuable time. And so it has been just, just an amazing opportunity for the job that I never even applied for. It's been a pleasure. And I didn't think I'd cry, but I just did. I just went too far. I just went too far. I made it all the way. And I will tell you, no one is more committed to a good transition than I am. It's gonna be gone. Awesome. That's it. Thank you.
Lyle, let's go down to you first.
Jane?
Well, just, you know, leadership is a broad and often undefined term. Or as you mentioned, it's, it can have almost any definition. It's a personalized style of sort. But I guess what I'm thankful for and appreciate is that you had the perspective of pushing at the right time on the right issues and sometimes alone. And that goes from your recognition of the importance of ninth grade success as it relates to graduation success to the COVID decisions, you know? I think you felt rightly, I think as, as time has demonstrated, that going back to in-person education or giving parents the option of doing that, is what we did, was really important. And the unintended consequences that a lot of people kind of dismissed at the time, we now know are, are fairly severe. So, so it was that judgment, that, that leadership. So, so it was that judgment, that, that leadership of pushing, really where, where there was resistance, I think that to me is, is your legacy.
May I? Kingsley, in addition to your.
Oh, I forgot Kingsley.
Do you want to say something to Kingsley? Okay. In addition to your extremely intelligent and hard work, one thing I want to say that I've really enjoyed about you is, one, your sense of humor and two, that your personality always makes it seem like no matter how bad things are getting, it's always going to be all right. And I've always felt like everything in your hands is so safe because it's all going to be okay. Just that really super calm, funny demeanor. And I've really enjoyed it. Thank you, Kingsley, and I hope you take that wherever you're, wherever you go. And Jane, I've only gotten to know you since, since November, when, when I was lucky enough to be elected to this position. But I knew from the first conversation that I had with you in your office when you asked those of us who were going for the position to come in and talk to you, I knew from the way that you listened to me and I knew from the way that I learned things from you, even at that first meeting, that this was going to be a great thing to be a part of. And I've really, I have not gotten to know you as long as Lyle or Shanley or a lot of other people on this board, but I have really, really enjoyed being in your orbit. Thank you so much.
And that's why I always want you to start with me. I'm sure we'll talk here pretty soon, Kingsley. Just appreciate your insight, appreciate your conversation and everything you did for the district. I was having a conversation at work earlier today and I'm like, Kingsley had his hand in just about everything district-wide. And when I made my comment earlier, it was, it was specific to the positions, not the person. But some big shoes to follow, some big shoes to fill. So I wish you well in your new journey and I'm sure we'll be talking here pretty soon. I'll slide to my left a little bit. Jane, so when I thought about what I was going to say, it was, it was just so much that I've experienced in these five years I've been on the board. But when you start making your comments about each one of us individually, I think the word I'll take from you would be, you listened. Just knowing you have, they say you have seven bosses. And I, and I wrote my little comment earlier and I said it was, it was good to work beside you. Not only sitting beside you, we would pass notes back and forth and, but just the journey to make our district a better place. I never felt like I was your boss, you know, or you were our employee. It just felt like we were working side by side to make this a better, a better district. But when you made the comments about each one of us individually, you hit everybody's perfectly. Probably we, each individually would have said the same things about each other. So you listened, even when we didn't agree. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I knew you were listening. I knew you were listening because we tried to do better, we tried to do better together. So I appreciate you, I wish you well in your journey. Get some rest, relax a little bit, enjoy the fishing trip. But, but I appreciate you, I really do. I appreciate your insight, so thank you.
Carrie, India.
I would say the first thing I think for both you and Kingsley would be legacy. I really appreciate the, the footprint that you guys have left. I am greatly appreciative and very humbled to be part of, as Janelle said, orbit. You talk about timing, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm big on timing, you know, coming onto this board and doing this and not having any idea and being able to walk this journey with you and understanding the vision, my purpose, your purpose, just being part of all of this. And I say thank you very much for that. It have made me into a, a different type of person. And so to be part of that, thank you very much. Kingsley, undoubtedly you have changed the game. You changed the game. You took it to another level. And to have that standard, that expectation, huge shoes to fill. And, but we appreciate that because we didn't know sometimes we, we needed that. And so to show us that we needed that, greatly appreciated. And not just for the district, but I'm talking about the community at large. You came into as an outsider, but you have made a home here and we want you to stay and keep doing the work. So thank you very much to both of you.
I'm going to start with another thing first and wrap it back around here. I always want to, first I want to send my thoughts and prayers to families in Texas that have lost their children. I can't imagine that happening to me, my family, or anyone else. And I just, I really feel bad for what's happened. And, and just really a thank you to our SROs that helped serve our abilities and hopefully we can expand our SROs to give more coverage to more buildings. I think our, our families there, our children deserve it. And I just don't want to see anything happen to here, but it's happening anywhere else like that. So I just, again, thanks to our officers out there that, you know, I get to met so many of them. I just, a lot of great souls there. And so, and Kingsley, like, like a thing said, but your creativity, when we have discussions, you come up with some amazing ideas, present some ways to work around some of the, sometimes financing limitations we have and, you know, and you did a lot of hard work during COVID, you know, to help protect, you know, what we're going to do for staff and for our children. And, you know, the ever-changing regulations with that, I mean, it had to be a very stressful several months there, years, and so, and just your building this willingness to have a conversation and discussion and, you know, we speak open-minded to some ideas. So I always appreciate that. And Jane, I think, if I ever think anything, you know, I, you know, my first come on board, you know, resilience, you know, if we, we come on to a failed bond vote on something that, you know, a lot of us are very passionate about and knew it was the right direction and, you know, we just, it didn't die. And, and, you know, and you look at that and look at the other programs that we have had it under your, your tenure here, you know, and, and all that, trying to make more opportunities for our children in this district and really show not only the community here, Waterloo, Waterloo School District Community, those, all the cities and that, the greater Cedar Valley and the state of the great things that we can do here and the great things we have accomplished. And I mean, a lot of that starts with, you know, your vision and your willingness to say, we're going to do this, we're going to step out of the box and try something new and not being afraid to take some risks, but at the same time, you know, make sure that we're covering our bases doing it. So I, you know, just have been blessed getting to know you and your family and, and you guys mean a lot to me, so.
First, you both have had to answer a lot of questions that I've sent. So thank you because I know there's been a lot of them that have come that way. And I, I grow every time. And the, the way that then that, the trust then that's built makes me do better at what I do. Because you guys already did, are already doing a great job. So making me better is what I needed to do. Yeah, Kingsley has probably gotten more texts and emails from me than I think I've sent to anyone I'm not related to. And I'm just so proud of what both of you have done. I say this a lot, not because it's a brag or whatever, but this is, I am third generation Waterloo schools. My kids are fourth generation, like this is in our blood. This is the best this district has been in that entire time. We have never been at this place. When my mom was coming to the bargaining table as a parent, it was over six cents. It was not somebody walking in and saying, here, guys, we're going to give you three percent or whatever. Like just walking in the door. Those things are mind-boggling. It is game-changing. It's completely different than how anyone would have thought about your role. And Jane, going through all the like, the superintendents that I've known on and off, I can't think of another one that I would feel comfortable calling up and asking, even before this, and asking something. Or knowing that even if it wasn't the answer I wanted to hear, that it was the right answer and it was, you had a reason for thinking that and you explained it to me. I'm so happy to get to see you just be a mom. I'm excited to go on band trips and to see you at the football games. And so I came in at COVID. So this is like, I finally get to know y'all as normal people and, and you're leaving.
They're not normal.
Well, so I just, I can't thank you both enough for what you've done for Waterloo. No one would ever guess that you both were not born here. Well, except for sometimes he's got a little twang, but you know what I mean? The Waterloo Proud is real. So thank you for the district and thank you for me as a board member, as a mom, as somebody who wants Waterloo schools to be something I can brag about.
Wow, last but least, okay. I just have to, this has been going through my mind because I can't look at Jane.
Girls, celebrate.
Yeah, no, it's, to have the job that Kingsley and Jane have are very difficult. Their public presences and people don't like you and they don't like the decisions you make. And that's hard on your family, that's hard on your spouse, significant other, kids. And then just what you both have had in your family, you had a baby in all this, Kingsley, and, you know? And with Jane, just what you have done with your personal life, I just really respect you that you would be able to run this district and lose your mom and your sister. And I just, I just, I've, I just really respect you because you did that balance. That's a really, really hard balance, really hard balance. And, and I just, I just, I respect you greatly. And now what I've learned from you, Jane, it's like math and, you know, I've got to go humor and Excel spreadsheets and everything from Jane, and which I don't like that well. So it's kind of fun to see her perspective and her uniqueness. And, and Kingsley, when you first came, I was a little afraid of you. I don't know why. Big presence. I think it was because you were big and, and smart and I didn't know what I was going to think of you. But anyway, so I'm rambling a little bit, so, but I just, I so appreciate both of you and I respect you. And I used to work at Unity Point, so they're getting a good person with you. And I hope you do good things there and, and, and I think I know someone that's might be doing some work for you, so I'll tell her to be nice to you. And Jane, just, your family deserves this. Your dad deserves it and your family deserves your time and your full energy, so. So I wanted to, I, I like quotes if you guys don't know, but "Life is a series of natural and spontaneous changes. Do not resist them. That only creates sorrow. Let reality be reality. Let things flow naturally forward in whatever way they do." A Chinese proverb, so, just to tell you both that. And, I will, and from the board here. I'm sorry, Michael, I feel like you need to talk. Michael, do you want to? Oh, Pam, I can let you talk. Well, okay, Jane, there is a little care package from all of us for you. And you've got to see this one. The History of Mathematics. It's just, it's so you, I just, I just.
It was on the ten center rack.
But, and as you, and then in the front, Jane, this is the funner part.
There's a whole chapter on slide rules.
Yes. I knew you'd love it. But. And here are a few treats for you. But, and when you were talking, this is just so appropriate and this is from us as a board. Doing what is right is not what is easy.
Oh, my gosh, thank you so much. You guys have been so.
Us seven lovely people up here.
And what they do is not always right and what's right is not always, so they're, I love it.
Yep.
That's right, absolutely. Oh, thank you guys so much.
You are welcome.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, yeah, that's what we're bawling.
Yes, dry up our eyes. Oh, my gosh, I'm going to hold my mouth for it. That is so cute. They are actually up at the lake right now.
Oh, yes. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries seven zero.
No one's opposed.
Yeah, that's a good backdrop.
Yeah.